Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all the councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Purdy, who's been excused. With that, we'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so long.
Thank you very much for that. Under Item 4, we have a, Item A is an Extra Mile Day proclamation for General Wallace Hall Nutting. City of Saco Office of the Mayor 2023 Extra Mile Day, whereas Saco is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in a personal effort, volunteerism and service. And whereas Saco is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends and community. And whereas Saco is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Saco acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2023. Now therefore, I, William P. Doyle, Mayor of Saco, Maine, do hereby proclaim that November 1st, 2023, to be an Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also to acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country or world a better place. Signed, this 23rd day of October, 2023, by the Mayor of the City of Saco, Maine. With that, just a little bit of history here. The late General Wallace Hall Nutting has been chosen as Saco's Extra Mile Hero of 2023. General Nutting attended schools in Saco and joined the Maine State National Guard at the age of 14. General Nutting commanded two tours in the Vietnam War, the First Squadron, 10th Calvary, 4th Infantry Division in Vietnam, the 3rd Armored Division, United States Southern Command from 1979 to 1983, and United States Readyness Command from 1983 to 1985. General Nutting retired from the service in 1985, but his years of service were far from over. He was a member of the Maine Cancer Research and Education Foundation, York County YMCA Board, and Pine Tree Council of the Boy Scouts of America, among other things. In 2003, General Nutting ran for the Mayor of the City of Bitterford and won. He ran again two years later and won unopposed. General Nutting received the West Point Distinguished Graduate Award in a ceremony at West Point on May 28th, 2008, and was recognized as a soldier, statesman, educator and civic leader. On August 17th, 2023, General Wallace Hall Nutting died, leaving a legacy of life exemplifying love of country, community and family. And today, we honor General Nutting as an Extra Mile Award recipient. With that, we move on to Item 5 of the agenda, and that is Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents this evening? Nobody's seeking recognition. Moving on to Item 6, Public Comment. One person has signed up, David Aronstein. Again, for those that wishes, wish to speak and address the council, please come forward and be heard. State your name and address into the records, speak directly into the microphone, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I didn't, I wasn't sure if this was the time to speak or if we could speak during the action item on the fire prevention ordinance or code.
This would be the proper time to speak.
Okay. Well, as I said, good evening. My name is David Aronstein. I live at 4 Baxter Lane in Saco, recently retired teacher, current builder of homes for young families. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the idea of the fire sprinklers and sprinkler systems in new construction. And I came to the last meeting and I spoke a little bit, and I listened to some of the other builders. I listened to some other people that may have some more information. I actually did quite a bit of research on the issue, and I kind of came up with a few things that I would like to just make sure that you're aware of, or you talk about, or consider as you look at this issue. One, obviously, and probably the, the leading issue that seems to be talked about all the time is the cost. The cost for a new home is somewhere, because we've recently have just done this, it's, it's somewhere between $18,000 and $20,000. It adds to the cost of the house. For me, then, when I saw that, because one of the families that we built a house for, one of the reasons they asked me, they said, why are you putting a sprinkler system in our house? I said to them, I don't really have a choice. It's not, it's not an option for you. It's something that we have to do. It was a new subdivision. It's a new home. We have to put the sprinkler in the house. They said, okay. They said, how much is it going to add to the cost of the house? And I told them, and they said, okay, because they really wanted a house. The issue for me becomes, or became, that they took that money, and that money became part of their mortgage. And so now, over the next 30 years, they're going to be paying for that sprinkler system that's in their house. So a system that might have cost $18,000 or $20,000 by the time they pay off that mortgage, hopefully, right? The system will have cost them far, far more than that. So the cost is there. I think it adds to the value of the house, which then adds indirectly to the taxes that they pay. So I think that also is an issue because it raises the amount that they're going to be paying in taxes every year. And the other issue, and it's sort of a soft issue, but definitely an issue, is it's not consistent with other communities that are in our surrounding area. We're now, we finished the, the building of the four homes here in Saco. We're now building a home for a family in Kenny Bunkport. One of the first things that I did was I went to the Kenny Bunk Code Enforcement Office and said to them, explained who I was, said to them, we recently built in Saco, we've built in Old Orchard, how is it going to be different in Kenny Bunkport? Are there things that I should be aware of? And I had some questions. One of the questions was, do I have to put a sprinkler system in the home? And they said, no. I said, okay. So that part, and then in and amongst everything else, that, that became sort of a point of discussion for some of the people that we've built homes with, and they've asked me specifically, why is it that we have to have it in Saco, but not in some of the surrounding communities? Then, when I did a little bit of research recently, I looked at and I noticed that really the fires that exist in Maine, or exist nationwide, don't necessarily exist with new construction. One of the things that I am most pleased about, and, you know, say all the time, is we build houses, we build them in a, in a way in which they're safe, in which they're appropriate, in which that they will stand for a long time, and that I will be proud that we built them. And one of the things that I've noticed, based on older homes, is how, how much more safe they are in terms of fire and code and all of the rest of that. So, for example, a lot of the electrical codes have changed significantly over the years. And recently, I looked into it a little bit, and most of the homes that catch fire, most of the homes where there are fire issues, usually is an electrical issue. And it usually is an issue that's related to older wiring. So again, we're asking, you're asking, people are asking, to put sprinklers into new construction, not old construction. Seems to me, it's sort of backwards. Like, if you really wanted to focus on where the problem exists, the problem exists in older construction, not new construction. So then, that was one thing. Then, the other thing that I, it's sort of a small issue, but again, it's kind of an issue. Recently, the, am I over the limit?
You are. If you could wrap up, that'd be great.
I am a teacher, so I feel like I'm giving a lesson. Anyway, okay, so I will wrap it up by just saying this. One of the things that I think, is I think we are trying to find a solution to a problem that doesn't really exist. And so, having said that, I also strongly, strongly believe that you're either part of the solution or you're part of the problem. And I'd like to be part of the solution, or I'd like to propose a solution. And what I would like to say is maybe instead of just mandatory sprinklers in all the new construction in the City of Saco, that we give the homeowners, new homeowners, a choice, and say to them, here are sprinkler systems that will work well in your homes, that you can be put in by certified installers, et cetera, et cetera. You choose. Here's how much it costs. Or if you don't do that, then maybe set up a group to actually see if the problem exists. Because my big fear is that you're going to do this, or it's going to happen, and we're just going to add this to the cost of a house. And now it's becoming even more increasingly difficult to build a house for someone that doesn't own a home or is trying to move into our city. So, anyway, thank you. And I'm sorry for
Thank you. There's any other member of the public that would like to address the council, please come forward and be heard. Again, please state your name and address for the record. Please speak directly into the microphone, and then please keep your comments to three minutes.
I'm going to try to keep to three minutes. Jean Saunders, 3 Plymouth Drive. Here to just give a few updates about age-friendly Saco. It's been a while since this group has heard some of the things that are going on. Things are happening relatively soon, so I wanted to make you aware. This Saturday, we will be hosting a dinner dance at the community center. Our own age-friendly group will be using our kitchen in order to make this meal and provide this to our residents. The Saco River Jazz Band will be playing their wonderful, big band swing music, and we'd like to invite everybody to come. It's right after the pumpkin fest, so people will be in the area. We also started today our new age-friendly mobility program. This is a van that was donated to age-friendly Saco. We received a $46,000 grant, and we are in the process of putting together a program, giving rides for non-essentials, for essential services, non-medical appointments. So we have started with providing rides to grocery stores, to our community center, which doesn't have any public transportation options. And, I've got one minute left. And other places like going down to Saco Main Street, et cetera. This is an on-demand service, so people will be picked up at their home, brought and brought back. We are using the funds that we received from the AARP Toyota grant to pay two van drivers. You can see the van parked in the Most Holy Trinity parking lot, our donated van that Glenn was able to arrange as a permanent parking spot for, so we're very grateful to them. We also have helped Bitterford and Old Orchard Beach expand their volunteer transportation program. We received a grant. We were able to give them funds and resources. They now have coordinators. We provide orientation. So we now have a tri-community volunteer medical transportation program. We are also holding a wellness fair. That's going to be at Thornton Academy on November 4th. David Aronstein's one of our vendors. We're going to have seminars on ADUs, on the healthy aging brain, and the papers that you need to have in estate planning. And our own Donna Bailey's going to do that. This is a free event. It's a free lunch, and a wonderful vendor fair, and a vaccine clinic as well. So come and get your vaccines. Northern Light Healthcare will be there for us. I went over. My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you. There's any other member of the public that would like to address the City Council, please come forward and be heard.
Hello, Chelsea Hill 108 Bradley Street. I'm here to address the home sprinkler system topic. It's my understanding that having home sprinklers in all residential residences has been an industry standard since 2006, at least 2006, for the NFPA, and 2009 for the building, building whatever body governs the building codes. And that it's a permissible deviation to not make housing safer. So we choose to deviate down from the standard. So there's, the logical arguments that are made against sprinklers in new builds, which housing is cyclical, right? We don't have as many houses from 1800 as we did in 1800, and we'll have, you know, the, the housing will iteratively turn over. The logical arguments against sprinklers in new builds is identical to the arguments that were heard well before I was born against seat belts and airbags. So if you can Google that and see, they're literally identical. The loudest opponents are against sprinklers in all residential structures are those who have to adapt to the change the most, which are builders. And it, it is hard, but, you know, it's just like auto manufacturers. They had to engineer the systems to build out seat belts and airbags and build that into the cost of the, whatever they were selling. Only 17 people died. 2022 was a statement that was made, I think, in an earlier hearing. My numbers show it was 15. It was so too off. I don't know if that's right or not. But, you know, we, we have a problem, right? People are dying in house fires, and sprinkler systems can make them safer. I looked at the Fire Fatality in Maine Report, Part 1, from 1983 to 1992, which was put out by the State Fire Marshal's Office. In 2007, this report was issued. And it says, fire fatality in Maine during this period was clearly a residential issue, with the majority of those residences being one and two-family occupancies. And it says that one of the, this was known in 2007, one of the ways to combat this is mandatory installation of sprinklers, sprinkler systems, and that additional help from fire departments and local code enforcement officers will help with this issue. So we've known about it for a while. It's not new information. I also just want to talk about that I spend the majority of my day advocating for things that, for investment in things that don't happen. So it's really difficult to measure when nobody dies in a fire, and we say, hey, we need to keep doing this, right? We need to engineer these problems out of existence. The Hazard of Controls hierarchy, or the hierarchy of hazard controls, show us that this is one of the more effective ways to combat deaths in house fires. So it's certainly not the least effective method. So you all are uniquely positioned to immediately affect generational health, public health in Saco. You can make this decision to have sprinklers installed in housing, and generations of people, long after your grandchildren have died, will benefit from it. So I urge you to require this code update. Thank you.
Thank you. There's any other member of the public that would like to address the City Council, please come forward and be heard.
Kyle Creason, from Berry Road, Saco. Yeah, I, I travel the state. When people ask me about sprinklers, I bring my numbers, bring my data. If you look, percentage of people who die in state of Maine is .000145%. That's less than people who die from cancer. So we are building houses better. If you want people not to die in homes, spring, smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors, that's what's going to solve it. That's a lot better, more effective. And actually, I actually have a forward from 1947 document by the federal government for building codes. It says, "A great deal is said and written about the need for increasing the supply of housing for reducing its costs. Regulations imposed by local authorities in the interest of safety and health necessarily are a factor in this situation." In the publication of the National Housing Agency, which is no longer, I don't know what it is now, but it's been changed. In the publication, the cooperation of the National Bureau of Standards has recorded its views of what constitutes a reasonable building code, requirements for drawings. These requirements have been, as their base, number of standards that develop the representative committees, and specialized experience in housing field has made seem advisable these additions, modifications or exceptions for these basic standards. This has been done. The aim has been to provide sound construction without excessive cost, and with adequate provisions for recognizing new developments in the building field as they occur. So we've done that. We're doing, we added blocking in homes to prevent fires from going up. There's no more balloon framing, which is a big cause for older homes and fires, because you can start a fire in the basement, it's going to go to the attic in two minutes. So you put plates and shoes, prevent that from happening. You cordon off floor systems to prevent fires from traveling sideways. In garages, we've added 5H drywall, the bottom and side walls. I've worked as a court officer in several communities, and recently was in Gorham. And with the new energy codes, in order to meet the ones coming up with sprinklers, you take the cost they just gave you at $5,000, because now we have to air seal around these things. And you can only air seal them, build a box around them. You can't put any, any air sealing around the actual pendant. So there's a lot of stuff that goes into this. And the fact that they're allowing insulation to be tented over these pipes increases the possibility of freezeovers. So I ask you to disallow this. As the, as you've seen, there is, for 20 years, I've never seen a fire death in Saco, and especially in older homes. We're doing very well with that. In the ICC, the 2009, when they brought that code in, what people don't know is, the sprinklers guys made the vote so that they enticed the firefighters to show up, and they weren't even allowed to vote. But the vote went through, but in order to save face, they kept the code in place. And it's been, it's been three or four times that they've been trying to take And it's been, it's been three or four times that they've been trying to take it out, and they finally decided to let the local jurisdictions take the sprinkler provisions out of the code. And I sit on the technical board for the code in the GESSA. We are not doing anything different. In other words, the NFPA 101 allows you to put a smaller sized window, we're not allowing that. So there's no cost savings in doing other things. So I'll leave with that.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the council, please come forward and be heard.
I have some handouts. I'm Inka Brown, I live at 161 Simpson Road. May I approach and give some handouts? All right, again, Inka Brown, 161 Simpson Road, Ward 1. I'm going to go back and talk about your discussion last week about the BPI for the ecology school. Clearly, I can't possibly lead you through all of the documents that you have, but I wanted to be clear. One of the, the first item I gave you is the traffic impact study. This is from the final site plan review in 2018. And in that packet, you will find the final follow-up responses from the ecology school's hired traffic consultant. I've summarized for you on the cover for that report. The vehicle crash history was provided. There were no concerns about crashes at the intersection of 112 and Simpson Road. And Mr. Bray also updated the data for 200 participants. If you've read the contract zone, and counselors, I hope that you have, the parameters of the contract zone are for 200 participants, and therefore, the traffic analysis was run for 200 participants. The second packet I gave you is the peer review of those comments from Mr. Bray. This peer review is by the city's consultant, Ms. Diane Morabito. She reviewed Mr. Bray's data, and I've summarized for you on the cover, that she agreed with Mr. Bray's data. And she additionally stated that since school buses are carrying students, and that is the frequent mode of transportation at 2 Simpson Road, a formal turn lane for safely storing the traffic is recommended at that intersection of 112 and Simpson Road. I'll talk about the third packet in a moment. I simply wanted to point out to you that the site plan approval process was long, it was rigorous, and it was based on the traffic that the ecology school is adding to the roadway. I fully reject the report that the ecology school submitted last week by Cebago Techniques that did not measure at all any type of ecology school traffic, it was simply the traffic on the road that is superfluous. You can take any intersection in Saco and run a study, and you will find many failed intersections, many pieces of infrastructure that do not pass the standards. I want to be very clear, in 2018, this traffic measure of a turn lane was based on the traffic that the ecology school is adding to Simpson Road. I also reject the commentary, perhaps, I don't know how serious it was, of waiving the turn lane. The planning board discussed this issue extensively. What is safe for Simpson Road? This was the outcome. The condition of approval was also very clear, that because it's a state road, the DOT would be involved, and that the city would also have to be involved in the process of the turn lane. You have had staff at this podium, and I do see the time, I will wrap it up, you've had staff at this podium report to you, and this is why they are not giving an opinion on this agenda item, because they would be in double jeopardy. They have been at this podium telling you, this turn lane is not on the city's radar screen. There have been no crash history here, no complaints, no formal issues. The turn lane is out of a site plan condition of approval, plain and simple. The ecology school did not have the financial capacity in 2018. It should have never been approved. That's why we're here now. I'll, I'm going to wrap it up. The only option, if you're really going to look at this and do what's right for the taxpayers of Saco, is to allow the ecology school to apply for the BPI, and you should be the host, the city should be the host of that. They have a right to try for that money. But for citizens to have to pay for a condition of approval based on a site plan process that spent, that was years, this condition has been going on for years. The school is responsible for this turn lane, and when all of the other projects in this city, intersections, traffic calming, bicycle, pedestrian, all of those costs, all of those things that citizens have asked for, the number one item in the comp plan identified by citizens, sidewalks from Ferry Road to Camp Alice, those are things that benefit the entire community. This is not a commercial area. I also reject that the Chamber of Commerce is endorsing a turn lane at the intersection in the rural conservation zone of 112 and Simpson Road. Please, please, if you have a knot in your stomach, it's because this is not the right thing to do. $308,000 of taxpayer money for a private developer's condition of approval. It's pretty clear what the right thing to do is. Lastly, the last packet I gave you is from last summer, when the ecology school asked for a site plan condition, a site plan amendment. Doesn't matter what it was for, it's not important, but I want you to know in that document, the ecology school, as a traffic management solution, is telling participants to use the Buxton End of Simpson Road. I have a real problem with that. They shouldn't be driving through Buxton to access the campus. That is inappropriate. I've spoken to the city planner about that, and her comment was, well, what else can we do at this point? The turn lane hasn't been built. This turn lane should have been built in 2018, sorry, by the time the school got their occupancy permit, right? It's 2023. Thank you for allowing me to speak longer, I appreciate it.
Thank you. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard.
Don Pylon, Glen Haven Circle. At the last meeting, I was speaking in opposition to sprinklers. I am still in opposition to sprinklers. I had suggested a working group be put together to look at this item before we, before the council votes on it. I had suggested the Home Builders Association and maybe someone from the Fire Marshal's Office. Since then, I've done some research, and I think that maybe you're, we don't have a risk manager, do we? Do we have a risk manager on staff? No. So someone should reach out to the insurance services office, you know what that is? Anyone? Maybe somebody in the back. That's, that's who the city gets their ratings for, from. They have a, that's a data collection company. The fire department uses them to get their, their fire rating, and they would have a lot of data, as I suggested last time, before we jump into deciding whether or not we should have mandating sprinklers. But as I've listened to people talk about sprinklers, let's not be mistaken, if you have a sprinkler in your house, or sprinkler system in your house, it's not going to put the fire out, it will suppress the fire, it's not going to eliminate the fire. Okay? That's something that no one said here. I think people have the impression it's going to put the fire out. It'll suppress it until the fire department gets there. Insurance companies as a whole will give you about a 7% discount for a sprinkler system. You know why it's not more? Because there has, there's a frequency of these sprinkler heads going off. They just go off, they'll just go off. Now, I'll give you an example. When this, this topic was debated at the State House, we have had experts come in from the insurance industry and say, the example was, a husband and wife went to Florida for three months and locked up their house with a sprinkler system in the house. The guy had to come back for business, came in, opened up his door, and four feet of ice, not water, because it was cold, he turned the heat system off, but it was just flooded, and it was water, water damage, sheet rock damage, water damage, floods, it was a mess, because one of the sprinkler heads went off. So that's why insurance companies don't give you a 10 or 15% discount, because these sprinkler heads inadvertently will go off, and they weren't there. So that's something else to keep in mind, they're not foolproof. Let's see, what else? If these things were infallible and they work great, and as the fire department will tell you, these things are great, we need to put them in all new, you know, new construction. If they truly believe that, then, and you guys approve this, then I think we should decrease the fire department's budget, and maybe we can eliminate some fire personnel. Because therefore, we don't need them. We don't need as many firemen, because these suppression systems that they believe work so well, we don't need as many firemen and fire personnel, and maybe some more fire engines. Think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, moving on to item seven of the agenda, and that is approval of the minutes, there are no minutes to approve this evening. Brings us to item eight, a consent item of notice of election for general and referendum election for November 7th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Hatch, any discussion? Roll call on the consent agenda, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to approve the consent agenda. Brings us to item nine, action items. Item A was an item that was tabled on October 16th, 2023, a second and final reading of City Code, Chapter 102, Fire Prevention Revisions. Is there a motion to untable this item? Counselor Johnston?
I move to untable this item.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston, untable. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on untabling only? Roll called, untable. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to untable. Counselor Johnston, this is your item, can you read this into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fire department respectfully requests the city council to consider proposed changes to the City Code for Chapter 102, Fire Prevention. Chapter 102 has not been formally reviewed for 10 years or more, and does not capture current operational methods. The goals of updating Chapter 102 are to ensure accurate reference to appropriate additions of codes and standards, and/or refine several definitions, adjust the description of fire hydrants to align with the requirements of the main water company, and add reference to and expand upon the residential fire sprinkler requirements incorporated into the subdivision ordinance. The proposed revisions to Chapter 102 will help to maintain adequate fire and life safety measures for Saco residents, as LD 2003 enacts to implement the recommendations of the Commission to increase housing opportunities in Maine by studying zoning and land use restrictions is implemented. Fire and planning departments work collaboratively on these proposed revisions, and staff recommends approval. I move to approve the final reading of City Code, Chapter 102, City, or Fire Prevention Revisions.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
I probably have several comments, and I am aware that Counselor Berman also has some potential amendments, but I would request that we give the opportunity to either the fire chief or the deputy fire chief some time, because I feel as though, to date, this has largely been driven by the public, and I don't feel they've had adequate opportunities to come forth and lay out their reasons why. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston, does that mean you want to table the item again for further consideration?
If they, being staff, feels ready to come forward, I would just assume have them come forth.
Thank you. Chief Duras, Deputy Chief Pendleton, are you prepared to come forward and answer any questions? And is this revision ready to go?
The revision is ready to go, yes, thank you. I would like to speak a little bit. The first thing I want to talk about is Chapter 188, which is the plant, the planning review for subdivision ordinance and division of land. Regardless of what occurs here tonight, it is our opinion that this does not impact the sprinklers in new subdivisions. When the Division of Land, Chapter 188, was modified, it was done in a separate chapter of NFPA that talked about water for fire protection in subdivisions. So I know there's a lot of discussion to make sure there isn't any confusion. It is, is our opinion, as subdivisions go forward, they will continue to require sprinklers in new one and two-family dwellings. The second is, I'm really concerned, because this shouldn't be, well, let's call it a battle between the fire department and contractors. The fire department has absolutely no concern whatsoever of the workmanship and the quality of new homes being built in the city of Saco. Our concern is what happens after people move in, and it's really about the furnishings. The buildings are built structurally sound, the electrical systems are structured, are sound, the heating systems, everything is in proper working order when they move in. What you need to look at and think back in time is the changes in interior finishes, plastics, synthetics, that have plastics, synthetics, that we have brought into our homes. Those are the cause of rapid fire growth and rapid heat that make it, reduce the amount of time that people have to safely get out of their home. These are NFPA 13 residential sprinkler systems. They are a life safety system. They are designed to protect the exits and pathways, so if there is a fire in the home, people can safely escape. I really, I have, over the last week, flooded your emails. We talked about, I’ve given you the data from the state Fire Marshal and provided you with a link to their report. I’ve also given you an update on the number of communities that have a sprinkler ordinance. I’ll read that one out. Full sprinkler protection in all new one and two-family dwellings are required in Gorham, Portland, South Portland, and Yarmouth. And our search really just limited us to Southern Maine. Communities requiring residential sprinklers in all new one and two-family dwellings located in subdivisions Lyman and Saco. Communities requiring sprinklers or stored water for fire protection in all new one and two-family dwellings and subdivisions include Arundel, Buxton, Cumberland, Dayton, Freeport, Old Orchard Beach, Sanford, and Waterboro. And communities that are requiring stored water for fire protection in all new subdivisions is benefit. Just to go back to Chapter 188, the original language called for 10,000 gallons of water to be stored within 2,000 feet of all dwellings in a subdivision. The new standard is now 50,000 gallons of water to be stored and the cost of that, the new standard, if we were to, would have chosen to go with the new standard, is like, I’m told it’s about 50,000. I can get you a better number if you need it. There was a question about maintenance. I provided the council with an online guide, easy-to-read guide. It starts out with, most home fire sprinkler systems are low maintenance. We checked with a local contractor, asked to give a rough estimate. What would it cost if you had to go in and provide the maintenance? The local contractor gave us, and told us that it would be likely to be one visit per year and the cost would be somewhere in the area of $125 a year. Lastly, I just want to talk about what we’ve done over the last two years since Chapter 188 has been on the books. In the last two years, the state Fire Marshal has issued 23 sprinkler system permits for single-family homes in new subdivisions in Saco. Additionally, the planning board has issued approval for 111 one and two-family dwellings in new and existing subdivisions that will be required to have residential sprinklers. In the same period of time, the code enforcement office has issued 69 construction permits for new single-family homes that are not located in subdivisions that will not be required to have a sprinkler system installed, and 91 construction permits were issued for one and two-family dwellings that, well, I’ll use the term and I hate it, grandfathered in a subdivision. So in the last two years, we’ve, Saco has improved its level of safety for its residents with having about half of the new one and two-family dwellings that have been built or will be built required to be, have sprinklers. My time is pretty up, pretty much up, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Chief Duras. Any questions for Chief Duras? Council Archer?
Yes, Chief, I’m asking for your professional opinion. A few years ago, around October, Halloween, on Hillview, we lost an 80, 90-year-old woman to a fire. Is it your opinion that there was fire, sprinkler systems, that there may have been a different outcome to that death?
Please don’t put me in that position.
Okay. I can withdraw.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Duras? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, sort of more of a professional opinion, more generically speaking. We’ve had it, as you’ve noticed, in the last couple of weeks, the debate really can come down to something that can save lives potentially versus a prohibitive cost. That really is the core of the argument. And there can be pro and con arguments, one way or the other. And if you can comment on the, on the cost thing, I would appreciate that, though. But, the second argue, part of the argument against, and I’d like you to comment on this, though, is this assertion that the new building constructions with the increased safety in terms of the electric, the electric wiring, fire doors, whatever have you, somehow has made market, marked advances in protecting buildings from pretty much going up all at once, like with the fire being contained in certain places now. I don’t want to be cynical, but anytime we, we go home tonight and watch the 11 o’clock news, 6, 8, and 13, there’s always one or two house fires that lead the story and I seriously doubt every fire that we’re seeing on a five-night basis is of a, like you said, a grandfathered home. Some of these have got to be new homes. So, what is your assertion in terms of protections that these new homes actually have with new building materials versus a home that was built, let’s say, 30 years before? As I said, you’re the professional on this one. What’s your opinion?
So, I’m going to miss some of those, so please point me back to the points you asked for. The first thing is, I greatly appreciate new construction. I really do. I’m the guy that puts firefighters in these buildings and I’m the, I’m responsible for their life safety. I appreciate that they’re in well-construct, going into well-constructed homes to extinguish a fire. And again, I’m going to go back to, it’s not the building construction, it’s the contents of the building and the rapid rise of heat that most fire deaths occur within five minutes. We are barely out the door and down the road in five minutes, even with good working smoke detectors. So from, one of the things that we didn’t do, but we have an opportunity to do, if there were a committee and we could do it anyway, I’ll have the side-by-side sprinkler trailer in April at our open house. And what it will show you is the rapid fire growth and the difference between legacy furniture, what I grew up sitting on, and today’s furniture and furnishings in the home. I see a lot of TVs, not quite this size, on the other side of the home that are impacted by heat, that are a melted glob of plastic. So, not only are we looking to save lives, we may be able to save some of the property, the belongings. It’s not too often that the building has to be torn down and replaced. We understand that. It’s, the question is, do people get out all the time? And they don’t. And what is left inside the building for the family to go back to?
Did I, did I get all your points, then?
Well, I kind of esoterically asked about the cost, but like I, but like I said, I mean, whatever you have, there’s an opinion on that.
No, I, I get it. There’s a cost. But there’s a return on that cost, because the value of the home never goes down. So, you’re paying interest rates on everything that you do and all the finishings, and I, and I understand that. We fully understand that there’s a cost. But in this case, you know, the cost might be recovered at the sale of a home. Now, the other thing I wanted to point out is, you know, I appreciate the comment about seat belts and airbags and curtains and if, how many of us would, if we’re given an option, would buy a car without airbags, without seat belts, to save the cost? We’re not given the option.
Just, just to add on the old versus the newer home, I’m with the chief, new homes are great. However, new homes are built with different materials, excuse me, so they use lightweight construction. And when lightweight construction came along years ago to make the job cheaper, simpler, and quicker, it was supposed to come along with the fire sprinklers. Well, the lightweight construction took off and ran ahead and left sprinklers back in the dust. Now, not an issue unless the building’s on fire. So, in a, in a traditional home that the chief and I grew up in, we had full dimensional lumber, so a two-by-four was two-by-four. It wasn’t, wasn’t, you know, inch and a half by three and a half. It was, it was true-dimensional lumber. So, the, the full-dimensional lumber can, can burn a lot, much longer before it fails, where lightweight construction, which is a floor truss made out of two-by-fours with a piece of plywood in the middle, burns off very quickly. So, so I’m here to advocate for the homeowner, his family, but as much so for the firefighter who goes to a building fire, steps through the front door, and because the truss is burned away, they immediately fall into the basement. And that, that’s how firefighters die. The truss is in the roof made by two-by-fours, held together with gusset plates, which are just basically stamped metal plates. They fail, they fall down on top of the firefighter. So, so I’m, I’m in this for everybody’s well-being. And I don’t look at it as we’re trying to force something onto anybody. I’m looking at it as, we need to live up to what the code says from 2009 or 2006, whatever the date is, depending which code you look at. We, we need to live up to that code the way you live up to every other code. People have had advantage to not have sprinklers up to this point, but it’s, it’s time to make it so. And the reason the list is so lo, so short that the chief described on those communities that have sprinklers is because this is the battle every town, every city goes through across the country. And firefighters don’t advocate for ourselves very well and our teams aren’t that big when we come to the podium. So shame on us for not doing a better job, but, but it’s, again, it’s for the well-being of everybody.
One last point, and then I’ll take more questions if there are any. And let’s take a look at what we’re doing now in our homes, and everything is battery-operated and lithium-ion batteries are the next fire hazard that we’re going to be faced with, whether it’s e-bikes, hoverboards, computer batteries. This is our next challenge. If you look, and I hate to do this, too, but in the city of New York, they actually have a task force looking at all lithium-ion battery fires in the city, because it is a high rate of fire and fatalities in apartment buildings in New York City. This is not New York City, but just letting you know that that’s, that’s one of our next challenges. Are there any other questions?
Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Chief Duras, I, I’m not sure if there had, what kind of data we have on the difference between a single-floor unit versus two floors and/or duplexes. You know, instead of putting a requirement for all, if, if we could still possibly maybe look at the types of dwellings as maybe a first step, if, you know, there’s questions still.
The code does not differentiate between the number of stories in a building. When we talk one and two-family, it could be a duplex side-by-side, it could be a duplex over. What we do know is that heat and smoke rises and the people on the second floor, depending on where the fire starts, are likely in more danger faster than the people on the first floor.
And that would go for any, like an apartment over a garage? I mean, as long as, I know that we were changing up to 40 feet.
It could, it could go for a single-family home if the fire starts in the basement.
Any further questions for Chief Duras? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may know this or you may not, we’ve been hearing the $10,000 to $20,000 to install a system like that. Is that neutral, is that a retrofit of a current building? Or is that like new cost? Because if you can plan it in, then you’re getting rid of a lot of those costs, because the data I’ve seen is anywhere from 80 cents to $4 a square foot for unfinished homes, but it almost doubles when it’s a retrofit.
Retrofits are always more difficult, no matter what you’re doing, even if it’s running cable TV or, you know, that’s why Wi-Fi is so nice. But, and we, and we are not here to dispute the contractors that have brought forth costs. We know what the cost of building material is these days. There’s a number of different systems out there and they can, it’s really going to depend on what fits the situation. We’re not disputing the cost of the systems.
Any further, Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. First of all, thank you, Chief Duras, for the information that you did send to us. I personally found it enlightening and helpful, so thank you for that. And I also commend both of you for your passion about keeping people safe, that we’re blessed to have public servants like you in our midst. I just have a very general question. One of the things that sparked my interest in the material that you sent was a reference to the, I got to get the right term here, the water storage or component, which I really wasn’t, yeah, stored water option, I really wasn’t aware, but Chief Duras did explain how that worked. Are there any other alternatives, other than that, that, that we should be aware of? Not that they’re perfect, but...
Probably better answered by a sprinkler contract, but what really depends on is the supply. If we’re talking about someone who is on well water, it’s going to depend on the supply and the, and the pump. Personally, I think the best system is the one that’s integrated with the, the water within the home. Then it’s, there’s no extra pump and you always know, if you can’t take a shower, then you don’t have a sprinkler system. But that may not be the right alternative for all situations.
Any further questions for Chief Duras? Any further discussion? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, I do have some further discussion, not a question. And I just want to acknowledge, this was a very difficult item for me. I understand the real urge to keep people safe. I commend our chief and deputy chief for their advocacy around safety. I think it’s a very important issue. I’m glad we’re discussing it. I’m also weighing that against what I think are my top priorities for the city. And when I think about where I am, coastal resilience is number one, transportation infrastructure number two, and the price and availability of housing is number three for me, in terms of my issues. And I think the debate’s been framed a little bit about sprinklers versus not sprinklers. But, but to me, that’s not the issue. It’s mandated sprinklers versus optional sprinklers. Anybody, of course, can always put a sprinkler system into their house. The question is whether we are ever going to require them for all one and two-family homes. And I’m not even certain I’m opposed to that, but I think I would need to better understand the options, the limits, whether it made sense for all new dwellings or only some, perhaps based on their square footage or size or proximity to a hydrant or other forms of stored water. And I just think at this time, I’m not ready to move forward with requiring all-new one and two-family dwellings to have, to mandate to have a sprinkler system involved. And therefore, I wish to offer an amendment that would amend Chapter 102, Fire Prevention, Article 1, Fire Code Subsection 102.4, Automatic Sprinkler Systems, Paragraph A. And the intent of this is to remove the requirement for automatic sprinkler systems in all-new one and two-family dwellings. And to do this, I think I need to do two things. One, I move to remove Paragraph A in its entirety and to re-letter Paragraphs B through G as A to E accordingly. And second, I wish to amend Chapter 102, Fire Prevention, Article 2, Life Safety Code, Subsection 102.9, Adoption of Standards by Reference. And I wish to add a second paragraph to that section, which will state extinguishment requirements in one and two-family dwellings. Section 24 dot 3 dot 5 dot 1 of NFPA Number 101, the Life Safety Code 2018 Edition, is not incorporated by reference. Thank you.
Councilor Berman, thank you very much. We’re going to go one at a time, because that was a lot of wording and I wasn’t able to write it all down.
Thank you.
As you were talking. So, Item 1 is to amend 102.1, Article 1, Subsection 102.4, remove Item A and renumber this, the subsequent items. Is there a second? Is there a second on that amendment? That motion dies for lack of a second. Your second amendment was...
So, I will not make the second change to enact that, since that wouldn't make sense without the first change. I do have a second entirely subsequent amendment to make. I wish to amend Chapter 102, Fire Prevention, Article 1, Fire Code Subsection 102.4, Automatic Sprinkler Sections, Paragraph D. And I wish to remove the fire chief or deputy fire chief in charge of fire prevention, and replace it with the city council on advice from the fire chief or their designee. The intent is to make the responsibility of granting waivers to the city council rather
Okay, Counselor Berman has made an amendment to 102, Article 1, Subsection 102-4D, and that is to remove the chief or designee and place with, allow waivers to be given by city council after consultation with the fire chief and/or designee. That is the amendment that has been offered. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Counselor Johnston, seconds for discussion. So, now, the amendment has been brought forward. Now, we can have some discussion. Counselor Berman, do you want to start off the discussion as it's your amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this is just to grant transparency to the process. This paragraph allows waivers during substantial remodeling to the sprinkler requirement, and allows those who feel like there'd be an excessive cost to that remodeling to seek a waiver. The current language would have that waiver granted by the fire chief, which would make that information not public, and may allow, although I think the chief is, I'm sure, will be consistent in his application, the public will not be aware of that consistency nor understand necessarily the criteria. This requires people to come in front of council, and requires the waiver to be granted in public, which I think makes it more transparent, fair, and consistent.
Thank you. Chief Duros, did you want to respond?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let you know, and for all the council, communication with Counselor Berman, I'm in full support of this amendment.
Thank you very much. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I can appreciate, you know, the amendment. However, the way I've read this from the beginning is that there's an appeals process that actually would bring any appeal before the city council. And so, I didn't have a problem with the way it's currently structured, given that if you sought a waiver, you go to the professionals we employ, they make a determination. If you have a problem with that determination, then you go before a council. For me, it's just chain of command, being someone that likes that structure, it seems more sensical the way it is currently. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I do appreciate Counselor Berman's intent, though, I must agree with Counselor Johnston in the sense that if you have an appeals process, that's where it makes sense to get us involved, though. But I don't want to see a situation where folks are coming, asking for a waiver, and in a city that's this size, whether you might get a crowd of people that may say that person deserves one, that doesn't deserve one, for reasons that really are not germane to the issue at hand, though, or essentially politicizes things of that nature. And, I mean, sometimes that happens. I know years ago, someone wanted a site change for a minor issue on the planning board for their property, and it brought out three or four neighbors that liked, helped force the thing down. And I wouldn't want to see that type of thing happen at the city council level on something, on an issue such as this, though. So, I think the appeals process, as it's baked in to what we have in front of us, is an acceptable way of going. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch, then Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm going to weigh in and agree with Counselor Johnston and Counselor Gunn, and I'm trying to think of other situations where the council sits in the position of granting waivers when we have professionals in place and boards in place that are likely more competent than we are, with all due respect, everybody, including myself, that we need, personally, I just think we need to go through that appeal process that's already in place. So, that's my position.
Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. I understand the disproportionate cost to the renovation. Do we already have this process in place? How do we determine the economic hardship? Who's to say that is qualified to determine the economic hardship of an applicant asking for a waiver? Where is that coming from?
It's not from our office as far as the economic hardship. We look at the cost as being 50% of the value or more.
Okay. So, you're rationalizing it based on the cost of putting the system in?
Versus the value of the home.
Okay, not their personal finances, whether it becomes a, oh, okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Johnston, do you want to withdraw your second?
I, just, we can vote it up or down.
Fair enough. Any further discussion? A roll call on the amendment only, the amendment only, again, to remove the chief and/or designee and introduce the city council for waivers on the front end. Counsel Archer?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
A no's have it, five to one. That brings us back to the main motion. The main motion now, as it stands, with no amendments. Main motion with no amendments. Any final discussion? Questions? Counselor Johnston?
Just a little confused. Didn't Counselor Berman move to remove the sprinklers? Wasn't that...
That failed for lack of a second.
Okay. So, are you all good with your proposed amendments? Yes? I mean, you had several that you submitted. I just want to make sure we...
I have all my...
All right. Well, then, I probably do have several things to say. I guess for me, I have to start back, you know, at the beginning of this and what I stated previously, which is what I knew at the time, what I still know, which is, as we've heard stated, this is current code. This is not just in the subdivision ordinance, but it's also part of the NFPA. I assume the people that crafted that code, in all aspects of that code, did so for good reasons. You know, we can pick and choose what we like or dislike, but I'm going to assume that they were done for the life-saving reasons. It's concerning to me that we have code, and again, that maybe this is just me, and I go, I like structure, that we have code that we're allowed to cherry-pick and say, this element, ah, do what you want with it. I mean, how is that fair to any other codes that were required to follow? So, that's a sticking point, and it has been since the deputy chief brought that forward during the ZORs process. I just didn't sit well with me. It seems weird to be, for a lack of a better term, that we would allow such a thing in the state, you know? And when you dig into it, you come to the realization, like many things in government, it's because of the realtors and the builders' associations that lobby the state government that allow this to be plucked out yet. We have to live with several hundreds, if not thousands, of other codes in our everyday life. So, again, as I stated, as you've heard, and we've heard a lot, this council, or at least many of us that were here, moved forward with support of the current subdivision ordinance that requires this aspect. I think, again, I can only speak for myself, but the perception was that both the planning board, the ZORs members, and the city council at the time were in support of this because we believed, or thought, or maybe just hoped that it would save lives. So, again, going back to that time, I fully understood that that was a small step towards this much larger step. So, it didn't blindside me. It shouldn't really have blindsided any developer out there, because many of the same faces that spoke, spoke at that time. So, they should have known it was coming forth. So, again, I go back to needing structure, and I think, it's not just me, I just, I think people, that they expect it out of their government. We should have some form of structure that's understood, or expectations. So, when you have inconsistencies throughout your code, whether it's this or others, it's about fairness to me. So, and again, I'm certainly not advocating for eliminating them altogether, but I'll give you an example. If you're in an apartment building, going back several decades, they're required to be sprinkled. What's the difference? I guess is where I'm at. Fire happens anywhere people live. It happens, honestly, in nature, without people there. So, why is that any different than this situation? Right? And I guess that's a rhetorical question. I don't see any difference. We have some of the public comments I heard, and again, you know, some of the public has actually addressed some of the public comments previously. But, you know, I heard one of the big things we've heard, which is, it's not an opportune time because of increasing housing costs. Okay, valid concern. Totally get that. But from my perspective, having, dealing myself personally with a lot of old buildings, I can tell you, more often than not, I'm cursing out going, you know, X, Y, and Z, didn't somebody do this before I'm dealing with it? Right? So, I look at new construction, and this is the opportune time, period. The walls are open, the construction's being done, right? So, I don't understand where that comes into play, because five years down the road, we're still going to have that same argument, that now's not the opportune time. It's similar to the Campella situation, where we sit here and say, we spin the wheels, spin the wheels, see the costs go up, see the costs go up. The costs are never going to come down logically, at least from my perspective. So, again, if we had homes in Saco protected with these systems years ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation today, and they would be, it would be the norm, right? If I could go back to 1820, when my house was built, I would love that, you know, to have somebody install that system, because fire is something that I personally, it concerns me. It just, it does. You know, and it's not something I can do, but like I said, I would love to be able to say, hey, wouldn't this be, you know, a great option? So, that's really what this is about. It's about looking forward, not backward, not about current costs. It's about moving, you know, the community forward. You have modern technologies, you adopt modern technologies. This technology, in reality, dates back to the 1800s, so it's really, it's not even really all that modern. Again, you know, one of the comments you heard is X amount of deaths, you know, throw the number out there, which is really an unfortunate statement that I've heard, period. I mean, I've said it before, I don't care if it's one death, right? Like, to attach a number to it is kind of sick to me. I mean, if this system may save a life, why wouldn't you go that route? You know, as Counselor Archer pointed out earlier, we had a fire in Hillview a couple years ago. I happen to have known the family. I'm pretty sure that had that been an option, it was installed, and it maybe potentially would have saved their elderly loved one's life, they probably would have supported it. But the house was built in the 1970s, it didn't exist, right? I know personal experience, I know of a young man, he died several years, not in this community, but, you know, next door, in a fire, 19 years old. I think, you know, this is like insurance. You don't, everybody complains about the cost, myself included. I remember being a young kid, first getting my license, my father telling me I have to pay for the car insurance. I'm like, oh, it's stupid, I'm not going to get into an accident, right? Until it happens, and it's the same situation. I can make that argument about many things in life, right? This is just another insurance policy. Maybe it doesn't save, you know, every instance, as some people have said, you know, maybe it doesn't put out the fire, but as our fire department has indicated, it takes some time to get places, right? I mean, I've, again, another personal situation, I watched just this past winter, as a house down the street from me went up, lightning fast, right? I mean, lightning fast. And again, it's not all apples to apples, but it was pretty eye-opening to me to see how fast a structure can be fully engulfed. And again, we go back to that, the affordability of it, which, again, like Counselor Berman, it's something that hits home for me. But I guess when I hear that statement made, I've watched the market. None of the people making those comments are building true affordable housing to begin with, right? So, without the sprinklers. So, there's this assumption that they're not going to ask $700,000 for a home without the sprinklers? No, they're going to go to the market. That's what capitalism is in that sense. Again, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just stating it. We're acting like by not doing this, all of a sudden, we're going to have affordable housing. Those are two separate issues. They can't be confused. We have other tools in the toolbox, you know, to go after that. And I think going forward, these are things we should talk about, you know, about ways to bring down those costs. But for me personally, I think it's important we get this in place, see how it goes, and then address, how do you lower these costs? And I have ideas. The fire department has ideas. We've discussed them previously, and I'm willing to support them, but I don't think, I think the longer we stand here and say, oh, maybe next year, two years from now, three years from now, when the science really isn't changing to me. I mean, I've seen the videos, I've seen sprinkler systems work personally, not just, you know, on online or whatnot. They do work. So, you know, you have a cost of 15, 20, we'll go the high side that I've seen. You can bring down those construction costs just by cutting out the luxury finishes that are in all these homes that I'm seeing built in Saco. I'm talking about not going with high-end granite countertops, not going with high-end granite tiles, cabinetry, you name it. There are ways to bring down those costs. Like, to think that that's just going to break the camel's back, a sprinkler system, that's absurd, respectfully. So, I mean, and again, maybe that's just my take on it, but ultimately, I mean, look at what's being built, look what's on the market. I can easily find you the $15,000 to $20,000 to put the sprinkler system in. So, again, I mean, we've heard a lot of the data, so maybe I'll spare some of that, but again, it seems that everybody has different data. But what I found today, anyway, was, you know, 80 cents to $4 in new construction per square foot versus $2 to $7 in an existing home. So, again, if we're looking to implement this in the future, you're now talking about what was new is now old. It's too late to, you know, start, or I shouldn't say it's too late, it's not as efficient or costs, or, you know, affordable to do old construction. Cost of water damage from a sprinkler system. You have a fire, you've got damage. It's anywhere from 500 to 5,000 versus tens of thousands, if the fire department were to show up and put thousands, I mean, they might be better prepared to tell you how many gallons, but again, I witnessed firsthand, after a fire, I went and looked, and the entire basement was full, so maybe as much as hundreds of gallons, or hundreds of thousands of gallons in some of these properties. Cost of smoke damage with sprinklers, so a small fire, ultimately what you end up with, you know, several thousand bucks. Cost of smoke damage without sprinklers, tens of thousands of dollars. So, it's not just stopping the fire or saving a life, it's also saving your property versus the cost of a total tear-down. I'm just going to go with the average cost that I seem to find is $500,000 for a home in Saco. Again, cost of life, I think we, most of us, hopefully all of us, would agree, that's priceless. You've heard it stated before, and I looked into this today, that the home value itself increases from having these. There is an element of that. You know, but then there's the other component that when we sit here and we say, well, I don't want that, or God forbid someone says, I really don't care about my family. And again, just being funny, but the reality is, there still isn't another obligation to protect those around you, other properties around you. So, with southern Maine population increasing, densities increasing, lot sizes shrinking, we've all seen it, we've done it as counselors, some of our actions. It's great for builders, but you create densities that are far more in line with what I personally live in my neighborhood. And again, going back to that Stora Street fire, if it wasn't for somebody being up late at night, the neighbor, catching that, there's no... late at night, the neighbor catching that, there's no question in my mind, that fire would have spread to the three properties around it very fast. And the fire department was there lightning quick. I have it because I have it on, all on video. So I could see the response time at getting all their hoses out, watching that thing just blow up in flames. I don't know. I, I think that, you know, like I said, people ask, would you install it in your home? Yeah, I would. I can honest to God say that if I was building a new home, I would. I would take it one step further to say that these conversations amongst myself and other properties owned by my family, we're having them all the time now because we've came to the conclusion that, you know, life is more important than a few dollars. So I don't know. I probably could go on. But ultimately, I mean, you have a professional fire staff, they've requested this, not because they, I don't know, want to drive up costs or a part of the fire department or a fire science cog, you know, a cog in the machine, they're here before us because they have a lifelong history of seeing fires firsthand, what they do, how they damage and ruin lives. And, you know, respectfully, I, I think that we should support that regardless of, you know, what the cost may be. And again, I'm more than open in the future to having how, you know, or the opportunity to discuss how we could bring down those costs through other subsequent council actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote on this item, Council Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item B, which is a second and final reading on commercial property assessed clean energy CPACE ordinance assigned to Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 22nd, 2023, Efficiency Maine gave council a presentation on the newly adopted Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy or CPACE program. After the presentation, council asked to bring this item back for consideration and/or adoption. Saco does have a developer that would like to benefit from this program. However, for a developer to enroll in the program, the municipality must adopt an ordinance. Purpose and authority. Purpose, by and through this ordinance, the City of Saco declares as its public purpose the establishment of a municipal program to enable its citizens to participate in a Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE program so that owners of qualifying properties can assess financing for energy savings improvements to their commercial properties located in the city. The city declares its purpose and the provisions of this ordinance to be in conformity with federal and state laws. Enabling legislation. The city enacts this ordinance pursuant to Public Law 2021, Chapter 142 of the 130th Maine State Legislature, an act to allow for the establishment of Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, also known as the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Act or the Commercial PACE Act, codified as 35A MRS subsection 10201. I move to approve the final reading of the City of Saco Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy or CPACE ordinance. The city council hereby ordains and approves the City of Saco Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy CPACE ordinance.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Brings us to item C, one reading, acceptance of the Finance Director write off report assigned to Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. It is standard practice for the Finance Director to request council approval on writing off amounts owed to the city, especially with regards to taxes. The items recommended for write off have been deemed uncollectible and therefore we are recommending that council approve removal of these items from our books. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the Finance Director to write off the delinquent amounts for the identified persons and entities and remove them from the books. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Although I'm comfortable reading this item into the record for the sake of transparency and proper ethical conduct, I provide you, the public, with this disclosure. On page 47 of tonight's packet, on the list of personal property tax, four rows from the bottom, you will find a reference to PSH Inc. in an amount of $204.88. I personally own 50% of that main corporation and my wife owns the other 50%. The personal property tax amount in question was assessed in 2017. The business it pertained to, which was Winter Haven Assisted Living Community, ceased operations in June of 2016 and was no longer required to pay personal property taxes. This business closure timing issue affects several other businesses on that list. The 2017 tax bill, when received, was returned to the city along with a note from me explaining that the business had ceased operations and was no longer responsible for paying personal property taxes. Now, the vast majority of that personal property that was subject to tax was donated by my wife and myself to the Shalom House in Portland for them to use in their various group housing programs. They carted away a fairly large box truck full of usable furniture and we were happy to donate it. So by the end of 2016, we were no longer in possession of any of that personal property that was subject to taxation. So because of my company name, my company's name appears on this list, I will be abstaining from voting on this motion tonight.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Johnston. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you. Just along those same lines, now that I'm reviewing this, I happened to see a family member of mine listed for three cents here. I'm happy to pay that three cents. But just wanted to make it aware that my father is listed here.
Thank you very much. I'm sure after all of his years of service to the community, I think the three cents we can look past. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you. I just have a question on the rental income on the Bastille approved by former city administrator Kane Rath. Was that an agreement that when they left the property, that that would be removed? Because that was only within the last year.
I believe that was part of the agreement that they arrived at.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the write offs that have been proposed? Counselor Johnston.
One quick one, seeing that there's a lot of them. I'm just wondering, and I don't need the answer now, just, is this going to get us caught up? Because many of these years, many of these go back, you know, at least a decade. So are we kind of squared away now and starting anew?
Bring up Finance Director Matherne, please.
Sorry about that. I had no idea. So there was no previous collections between 2003 and 22. We started off with 217,000 of debt. We were able to collect 86,000 of that. So this brings us up to 2018. Maine statute of limitation is six years of collections. So I ran a report today. If we were to write off 2018 with no more collections, it would be about 6,000. So this would get us caught up.
Okay. Thank you. Like I said, a lot of this is many, many years outstanding.
And a lot of it, like the three cents, is cleanup.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, comments? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Abstain.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero with one abstention. That brings us to item D, a first reading amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program appendices. Counsel Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Each year, Maine Municipal Association presents municipalities with new appendices for their city ordinance, which need to be reviewed and updated, adopted. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of the amendments to the Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program, Appendix A through H, and further move to set the public hearing for November 6, 2023, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counsel Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to note, the recommendation from staff, which I greatly appreciate, is to continue use of the Portland HMFA. We did that last year in response to the rising housing costs and our perceived inability of families in need to find rental units at those otherwise New York County levels. And so I hope we choose to continue on funding this at that level.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote on the first reading, Counsel Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item E, we'll have a budget update for the fiscal year 2024, quarter
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. The City of Saco ended the first quarter of fiscal year 2024 in a sound financial position. Undesignated fund balance was at 2.5 million due to the delay in tax receipts for the first half bills. However, total cash and investments were at 28 million. So we were still able to meet all necessary financial obligations. Total expenses were 406,852 ahead of forecast at the close of Q1. This was primarily due to bond payments. They are due October 1st, so I forecast those payments in October. But of course, we do pay them ahead of time in September. Code enforcement, communications, county tax, fringe benefits, insurance, parks and rec, public works, and the school budget were all on track because they were within 5% of forecast. The assessor was 54% behind forecast. The department does have an RFP out for the measure and list portion of the city revaluation. We talked a little bit about that last week. The city has budgeted 250,000 total for the costs under contracted services. Capital projects, 43% ahead of forecast. As I mentioned, bond payments due 10-1 were paid in September. This should level out in Q2. City administration, 42% behind forecast with the city administrator position held by an interim. Operational and base pay costs were low versus budget. The final payout on the previous city administrator's contract did hit in fiscal year 2023. So we will not be seeing those expenses this year. City clerk is 8% behind budget. Hourly wages for election workers have not yet been paid for the November election. As an aside, the general assistance line, which in the last couple of years has been very light, has seen heavier use in the first quarter. Expenditures exceeded forecast by 19%. Contingency is 13% ahead of forecast. Abatements have exceeded budget with 201,464 in the first quarter versus $100,000 budgeted. There is sufficient overlay built into the tax appropriation to cover this overage. Mislenous expenses are also nearly 50% expended through the first quarter. Council, 73% behind forecast. The council Zoom license for hybrid meetings has not had any expenditures. And the Q1 council payments occur in October, so there's just a very small amount of council budgeted for the first quarter. Finance is 23% behind forecast. Paychecks is forecasted upfront, the annual fees, but billed through the year as we incur payroll costs. So that line is currently under forecast. Fire and ambulance is 7% behind forecast. Wages were a little light in the first quarter. Q1 call firefighter pay is distributed in October and the department was also down a staff person. Minor equipment and uniforms are also tracking behind forecast. The first quarter fire protection water bill came in 6,700 below anticipated. So we may see a little bit of savings on that for the year where the fire protection water bills were not going up as high as residential water bills related to the updated water treatment plan. Human resources, 20% behind forecast. There have not been any significant training expenditures. Human resources does have $20,000 budgeted, not only for departmental training, but also for citywide training. Information technology is 16% behind forecast. Software fees are forecasted upfront but expended through the year. Planning, 37% behind forecast. Filing fees for a departmental document storage project, as well as funds reserved for several studies, have not yet been expended. Police department is 11% behind forecast. The department continues to be short staffed with base pay net of overtime under forecast by $79,542. PCEP costs have not yet been billed to the city from our partners in Bedford. Solicitors, 43% ahead of forecast. The city has had to reach out to a couple of additional legal firms for consultation on various issues, so that's increased our use of the line. Supported entities are 7% behind forecast. Maine Municipal Association has not yet been paid for the city's annual membership and anticipate that bill to hit in the second quarter. Transfers, the council budgeted transfer to increase the CE mitigation fund, what had not yet been booked when I put this report together, but I did book it. So that's now been transferred to that fund. Are there any questions on expenditures?
Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just a general question about the training expenditures. A topic that's near and dear to my heart professionally. I sometimes get concerned about the lack of training expenditures, particularly if there's mandatory training versus voluntary. And do you have any sense of why that's kind of sitting there? Are we, are we just not taking advantage of voluntary opportunities or?
I would venture to say it probably has to do with the transition in the city administrator role because the department had between five and around $5,000 to $10,000 for departmental training. But the other $10,000 for sort of citywide training has to do with sort of leadership trainer, what kind of trainings we want to put rising stars in the organization through. And I think that's typically been in consultation with city administrator.
City administrator.
Yes, Counselor, I just wanted to let you know that we've been meeting as a staff to talk about training and that's one of the things that we're putting on the front burner right now.
And does this line item include training, for example, of any of our boards, our volunteer, volunteer boards, planning board, zoning board, anybody who wants to take MMA training? Is that part of that line item or are those embedded in the various department budgets?
So a lot of the very specific functional training is budgeted in the departmental budgets. So I do know council, for example, has a training budget, I think $1,000 to $2,000 as well as travel for related travel expenses. I, I am not sure about planning board training costs or where those might be budgeted. I would imagine planning department.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Please continue.
On the revenue side, so revenues were of course low in Q1 as a result of the council approved delay in tax due dates. Thanks to the city's very strong starting cash position, all expenditure needs were met without the need to borrow in anticipation of tax receipts. Revenues in the first quarter varied significantly both over and under forecast depending on the revenue source. This isn't entirely surprising, the first quarter, you tend to see more variations versus the budget, especially on the revenue side where we don't have as much control necessarily on when those revenues hit. Fire and ambulance fees, communication, that's your franchise fees and state assistance, all on track because they're within 5% of forecast. So building rentals, 23% ahead of forecast. Building rentals came in higher than forecasted thanks to the increased rental revenue from the train station lease. Council has approved a budget amendment to appropriate those funds. a budget amendment to appropriate those funds for increased security and cleaning at the transportation center, so that's not going to look ahead of budget for next quarter. City clerk is 60% behind forecast. The city has not yet received any reimbursement for general assistance expenses incurred in fiscal year 2024. Lag times can be as long as three months or even longer for general assistance reimbursements. In fact, I am not sure that we even have received reimbursement through June for general assistance, and that just has to do with the length of time it takes the state to reimburse us. I do keep track of what's been submitted to the state. General Assistance Director notifies me of those reimbursements, and I tick and tie them to the state reimbursement amounts when they flow in. So I do keep track of them on a monthly basis. Code enforcement is 220% ahead of forecast. The main State Department of Defense has a significant project in the docket that has resulted in a single permit fee of $233,572 in the first quarter. So, that alone accounts for exceeding forecast. Finance fees are 32% behind forecast. Tax lien interest is behind forecast because of the delay in tax due dates. Tax and lien interest will continue to lag forecast through the second quarter since council has elected to waive interest until November 16. Interest earnings on our cash is 54% behind forecast. Cash balances were lower than forecasted due to the delay in tax receipts. This meant that interest earnings were lower than anticipated for the first quarter. Interest earnings should bounce back in October and November. Additionally, we do have significant investment in U.S. Treasuries, and I believe those interest payments occur semi-annually in October and April, so we should see some more interest next quarter. Parks and rec is 20% ahead of forecast, so participation rec programming continues to be very robust thanks to the hard work of our rec team and Director Summer. Planning is 25% before behind forecast. This is primarily tied to cost recovery revenue amounts. They're typically booked 15 days after the close of the month, so these revenues are going to lag each report by about a month. Police department revenues, 25% behind forecast. The SRO officer reimbursement is typically received in March. It was initially forecasted, sort of as even receipts through the year, so I've updated that, so it doesn't look out of line. Public revenues, public works revenues, 31% ahead of forecast. Motor vehicle excise continues to exceed forecasted amounts. We do use a three-year average to forecast our revenues, which is a conservative approach, and because of what's going on with motor vehicle prices this every year, it seems to be far exceeding our forecast. Real and personal property, 91% behind forecast. Delayed tax due dates means that most revenue will be received in October, not in September. As of the printing of this report, October receipts were strong. As of this morning, when I repulled our budget data, we were right on track for real and personal property, so those have largely been received at this point. Sales of city assets, $200,000 in budgeted revenues from the sale of 12 School Street have not yet been realized. And then unallocated, we do have $19,641 showing as a net cost in this line, and that relates to some of the write-offs that we just discussed earlier. Are there any questions about revenues?
Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just one quick question. Back to the code enforcement, if, and you may have alluded to this, and I didn't catch it, but if that sizable single permit fee of $233,000 and some change was not in the mix, what would the percentage roughly?
From my...
Yeah.
I think they would have been right on track.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
We had taken that number down a little bit because code enforcement fees have been a little bit lighter the last year. So, and I think we're probably tracking towards that original forecast, except now we've added 233,000.
Thank you.
Lastly, grants. The city has not yet booked any grant-qualified expenses in the general fund. We did book grant revenues of $10,000. This is state reimbursement for city costs associated with implementation of LD 2003, updates to the housing ordinance. Related costs will be reclassified from expense lines for city reporting and compliance with state requirements, and the planning department is aware of the need to kind of pull that documentation together. The city has expended $685,043 in qualified expenditures for grant-funded projects and all other funds, and I have reached out to Planning, Department of Public Works, and the Police Department regarding reimbursement for those grant expenses, so we're not carrying that liability on our balance sheet. The city has expended $96,522 in ARPA funds year-to-date, and there's 1.56 million remaining in our funds for budgeted projects through the close of fiscal year 2024. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions? No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to Item 10 of the agenda. There's no new business this evening. So that brings us to Item 11, administrative update. City Administrator Bohenko.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Due to the rain, Pumping Festival, Harvest Festival has been rescheduled and will be held on October 28 from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We hope to see everyone come in their Halloween vests and enjoy the festivities. Drive-through trick-or-treating at Saco Fire Department. Join the Saco Fire Department at Central Station for the second annual drive-through trick-or-treating Tuesday, October 31 from 4:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Lots of Halloween goodies will be handed out with plenty of decorations and atmosphere to add to the Halloween spirit. We hope to see you there. The Saco Transportation Center new hours. Beginning November 1, 2023, the transportation center in Saco will be open to passengers from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. every day. Currently, the center opens to passengers from 5:15 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. RFPs, Request for Proposals Residential Inventory Update. The City of Saco is requesting proposals from revaluation companies to conduct a residential inventory update to provide an accurate inventory of all taxable residential property within the City of Saco. Proposals are due by Wednesday, November 1, 2023. Request for Proposal Commercial Equalization Project. The City of Saco is requesting proposals from revaluation companies to conduct a commercial equalization project to provide an accurate inventory of all taxable business and commercial property within the City of Saco, together with the owners of record as of April 1, 2024. Proposals are due Friday, October 27, 2023. Request for Proposal P-015 Submersible Water Pump, Wastewater Pumps. The scope of work for this proposal consists of furnishing, testing for total submersible water pumps, smaller all-weather pumps, and larger wet weather pumps, all well as pump support and lift-out systems and pump monitoring equipment. Proposals are due for Friday, October 27, 2023. Request for Proposal Transportation Master Plan and Impact Fee Study. The City of Saco seeks proposals from qualified service providers for a transportation master plan and impact fee study. The purpose of this RFP is to solicit proposals and consultants to work with the City of Saco to identify current and anticipated improvements throughout all quarters of the city to create fair, clear, and transparent impact fee system whereby the city can collect fees for the planned quarter improvements, necessary transportation upgrades, and general right-of-way safety considerations connected to community growth. The overall goal of this study is to create Saco's first citywide transportation master plan with a company impact fee system as outlined in the RFP information. Proposals are due Monday, November 20, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. And so that's all for the RFPs. Upcoming agenda preview for November 6, Amendments to Saco Code, Chapter 112, General Assistance Program Appendices, Public Hearing, Chapter 230, Article 12, Storm Water and Erosion Control Proposed Ordinance Amendments, and the Saco River and Camp Ellis Beach, Saco, Maine, Section 111, Shore Damage Mitigation Project Draft Project Partnership Agreement, also known as the PPA. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any questions for City Administrator Bohenko? No questions. Moving on to Item 12, Council Discussion and Comment. Any Council Discussion and Comment this evening? Moving on to Item 13, there's no executive session. That brings us to Item 14, there's no report. And brings us to Item 15. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to adjourn at 8:21 p.m. We will take a five-minute recess, and then we will head into the workshop. Topics for tonight's workshop are Item A, 12 School Street, and Item B, 32 Market Street. Topics for tonight's workshop are item A twelve School Street and item B thirty-two Market Street. Okay, the first item on tonight's topic for workshop is twelve Market Street. So we have Staff Resource Tracy Disjardins from the Economic Development Department and Ryan Summer, the Parks and Recreation Director. And the purpose of this workshop is to follow up on the discussions regarding twelve School Street and what the council wants to do with that. Ms. Disjardins, anything that I'm missing and anything that you want to introduce before discussions take?
I just would like to say, I think when you started off, you said twelve Market Street.
Twelve School Street, my apologies. My apologies.
I just want to correct that, that's all.
Thank you.
No, you should have everything in there. Basically, this is, you know, I've got copies and put a memo together, so I'm, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
So counsel, any questions regarding twelve School Street? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just to get us up to speed, my recollection is the last time we had this conversation, we kind of put it aside because we thought that there may be some opportunities with age-friendly Saco. And so can we have an update on that? Is that still in play and whether or not there's anything else that?
I guess age-friendly Saco is here in the audience.
Because I thought that was a major reason why we sort of deferred any action.
Correct.
So Jean is here.
Age-friendly Executive Director Jean Saunders, can you come up and kind of answer any question?
I'm not going to speak on their behalf. I've even had the conversation with them.
I think that's fair, and Jean's here, so.
I think I missed the question. Talk louder.
The button might be.
Yeah. No, it's on. She's on.
Okay, all right. So the question was, last time, this was before the council, there was some discussion about how age-friendly could utilize this. And has there been any progress or is there anything that you want to address the city council?
We're talking about the school.
Twelve School Street.
Right, okay, not Market Street.
On Market.
Right. When we, when this came up, I think back in 2019, it was originally discussed as a possibility for combination teen center and also senior center. I think everybody here is aware that currently at the community center, we have no real community space to hold any events. So we're always looking for places that we can actually hold events. So when you hear about the, you know, the community meal that we currently do, which is being held at the Saco Elks Club, it's because we don't have the opportunity to use a community center with a setup without having to put the chairs up and the tables up and take them down. And the gymnasium is the only space. I talked before about the very poor acoustics in the gymnasium. For years, we had the wellness fair there. I would very nicely give instructions using a P. A. system, and then when I was done, I'd say, okay, now we're going to our rooms. And everybody would still be standing there because there was no ability to really hear in the gymnasium. So again, we had to look for another location. So now we go to Thornton Academy for our wellness fairs. We're fortunate to be going back for the first time to the community center for our dinner dance. But again, that will take a lot of volunteers putting up tables, taking tables down. We got an email today from Saco Parks and Rec asking for volunteers to stay after the dance to take down the tables and chairs. So there is a real need for community space. This should be multi-generational space. This isn't just space for older residents. This is space for our community that people can come and be together. The current senior space is a second-roomed floor, a second-room, second-story room that probably holds at the most twenty people. For any kind of event, a lunch and learn, there's a limit in how many people can sign up because that's all. And it's a windowless room. It's kind of not that inviting. And if there's an opportunity to have community space that's walkable, that's very close to the downtown, that, you know, is close to City Hall, it would be phenomenal to consider what could be done to help create that space. And I'm going to say that I would be very happy to try and apply for grants, work with anybody. You know, it's in the historical district. I'm sure there's probably some grants available. I do believe Saco deserves a community center that can actually host community events. And I think the School Street property kind of looks like that. That was the original plan.
And has there been any evaluation of that option with that building? Have you guys had a chance to?
We, we had a, we had a walkthrough with, with Ryan, is Ryan here? Yeah, okay, I can't see Ryan. Yeah, Ryan helped, you know, unlocked, you know, the facility so we could do a walkthrough. You know, obviously, it's in great disrepair. It needs, it needs work, but it's got some great spaces. It does have a commercial kitchen, of course, which is, of course, outdated as well. But, you know, where the church was, I mean, there, it would be a phenomenal opportunity to host many events. I mean, we had brief conversations, and I forget who the last conversation was, with what some of the different organizations, senior centers, community organizations are doing across the country, is kind of thinking out of the box and having a commercial aspect of a, of a, of a center as well. So you might have a for-profit coffee shop that you're actually, you know, bringing in some revenue, but also brings in people and have space for, you know, classes, have space for making art. There's some pretty creative programming out there for multi-generational programming. Again, this isn't just looking for space just for seniors, but for everybody, you know, in the city of Saco to enjoy. I was with the Executive Director of Saco Main Street. Angie was on that tour as well.
Counselor Hatch, does that?
Yeah, it answers my question. I just, I'm kind of wondering if we've made any progress into making some total, type of final evaluation of the suitability of that space because I thought that's what we were going to try to do in the interim. And, and if we're, we're back to where we were last time we talked about this.
And I, and, you know, and I know this is a workshop and I'll leave it, I know it's council discretion as far as to let anybody else speak, but I do have a gentleman that was also interested in that property for what they want to do. And he was willing to come here and, and go for what the plans were as well, willing to speak.
And I don't want to downplay.
Right.
The points that Jean made because they're very valid. The question in my mind is, is this the spot? And if it's not, then we need to continue to pursue this conversation and do something with this property. At least, that's my, my position.
Tracy and Ryan, is it still the staff's recommendation that the city council sell this property?
Yes, it is.
Counsel, do you have any objection to hearing the yes that has been brought by the Economic Development Department? With no objection, Tracy, do you want to?
Sure. Introduce yourself so they know who you are.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Someone?
Speak in the mic, Dan.
Okay. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Dan Black. Here with two hats on, maybe I'd say. The first hat is in the CFO of the Quality Housing Coalition, which is a nonprofit that works in six counties across the state, helping folks who face barriers to entry to the housing market find housing. We do that by providing financial guarantees and sort of the wraparound services necessary to make folks successful in their tenancy. We've housed between one hundred and fifty to two hundred folks and families the last three years. And with that hat on, we have been talking with Tracy's department as well as the Saco School Department about creating some sort of housing within the twelve School Street. There is currently a RFP out right now for the Rural Affordable Housing Program for Main Housing, which provides soft debt, non-paying debt for the creation of housing units that are affordable to folks making up to eighty percent of their area median income or below. And then we partner that with historic preservation tax credits to try and make something work there. The other hat I have on, if I can, is I'm an affordable housing developer outside of my role at Quality Housing Coalition. We were actually the consultants on the Market Street property as well, though we were working with Guy Gagnon back in the day when this first came, or maybe the second time it came before you all. So I'm, you know, happy to talk about that as well, but, you know, just want to be clear that those are separate issues.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Counselor Hatch and Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Could you just elaborate a little bit on the School Street property and what you would envision that property could become regarding affordable housing?
Certainly. So I, I apologize blanking on your name. Okay. Jean? Jean, Jean was saying about having community spaces, and that's something we very much believe in. The second floor of that building is the formal, former place of worship. And I don't believe it would be possible to repurpose that space into housing suitably, particularly with, if you're going after historic preservation tax credits. So we would be looking at, at creating five small units on the first floor. Five is the minimum amount you need to apply for this Rural Affordable Housing Program. And then we would be looking to preserve the second story as some sort of programming space with community partners. You know, I don't want to say that, I, I do think in the world of development, it is helpful to have one organization that sort of has the reins and can drive the, the development forward, but we would be looking for community partners to do that.
So it's possible that you could potentially engage in some conversations that might allow age-friendly to be that partner for that community space?
Yeah.
I'm not looking for commitments, I'm just looking at conceptual acknowledgement.
So how, how our organization works is, we are a facilitator, so we work with, we work with over forty-five landlords and I think it's now like thirty-eight or thirty-nine what we call housing readiness partners, which are other nonprofits and social service agencies across the state that provide the services. We are housing navigators. We don't actually provide direct services, so we bring those other community partners in. So we have a lot of experience being that facilitator of community relationships. So I would certainly envision that. And, you know, that was when we met on site, we brought, and now I'm blanking on his name, Chris from the Saco School Department, you know, to, to at least have that initial conversation.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Again, not specific question to, to you. I just, overall, from what I recall, at least my perspective, my reasoning for pausing this was twofold. It was first to allow a new city manager get in place, take the opportunity to evaluate the organization, determine if there is any needs. And then, as I've stated multiple times, my personal preference is affordable housing. That's just my personal preference. I, I think, you know, the prior process, it was just a quick move to sell when we didn't reach out to some of our community organizations, whether it be age-friendly, whether it be Saco Main Street or a variety of them, nor did we reach out to other developers. So moving forward, whatever we do, I think we should do, I guess, an RFP process and see what's out there because, as I've stated many times, I don't like to operate in a vacuum. So, you know.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is always difficult for me when it comes up. I really appreciated the vision of a teen center. I thought that was critically important for youth. I, I think it's more so now even than it was before. I also appreciate the vision of a multi-generational space and a community center. Again, I see that as an area that, that Saco is lacking and would improve our sense of community if that were in any way possible at this property. That's the direction I want to move. Where I've been a bit turned around is, is some of the costs of the maintenance, of bringing it up to code, of making it usable. The costs that we saw previously, although they're not in the link in this packet, were just simply prohibitive for, for making that happen. And sprinklers are back on the topic of conversation, I guess, because sprinkling the bell tower was another piece that was going to be prohibitively expensive, as well as some of the electrical fires that had already started in that building and resulted in power shut-off. It, that remains my priority. If it's possible to use it for community space, if there are grants available, if there are dollars available, if there's some way of making that space affordable for community use, that would be my top priority. But, but I agree with Counselor Johnston, if that's infeasible and if the city can't use it for community space, if it can't use it for multi-generational space, if it can't use it for teen space, then I would love to see that space go to some sort of higher beneficial use. And I think affordable housing would be a proper use for that. And I enjoy the vision of mixed affordable housing and community space. I would just note that much of the usable community space in the way that Jean talked about is on the first floor. That's where the kitchen is, that's where the services are. So some of the uses that were envisioned, if the first floor becomes housing and the second floor becomes community space, I think that would not be the community space that age-friendly was talking about because the kitchen would be gone and some of the other services would then be gone also. Anyway, those are, those are my preferences, is community space first if we can. If not, I think affordable housing would be a great use.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more of a question directed at staff because I know it's been a couple of months. Is, is it still the staff's general opinion that if we were to retain it, that it would be cost prohibitive in some manner to refurbish it for whatever purpose that we, the council would deem appropriate?
I'll go back, excuse me, I'll go back to Dawn's number. You're looking at roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. You're looking at roughly $900,000 to repurpose it, to bring it up to code for sprinklers, electrical work, as well as many of the other pieces, the roof repairs and so forth. I still think you're looking at $900,000. Do I think...it comes to a numbers game. What's important? Would the Proxim Recreation enjoy having this space and move it forward? Absolutely. But the conversation really that I sat here, you know, a few months ago, was if you gave me a million dollars to choose from, do I wait five years for Burn School, or do I fix 12th School Street? I'll be honest with you, I'll wait five years for Burn School, because I have the parking. I have a much grander space that you can do so much more with. The possibilities are endless. But it really comes to the conversation of this board and so forth. Where do you want to spend the million dollars? And again, I'm a fiscal conservative guy, I have visions and dreams and all that. Three years ago, four years ago, when this proposal was projected to cost $350,000, I could justify it to every taxpayer in the world. At the number that it is today, I can't. And that's really the conversation that I struggle with as staff, to sit here and have this conversation with you. If you told me that a million dollars doesn't bother you, I'll say, let's keep it and let's go. But it really comes down to the conversation, what you're willing to put into this building, and what you want to keep, and do you want to put the investment, or do you want to wait for some time to put investment into a facility that can do so much more if you so dream of it?
I suppose this would be a follow-up question for Mr. Black, was it? So your organization is interested, the first one you said, not the second point, keep it clear here for the record, is interested in buying this property as-is with all the work that Mr. Summer just kind of initiated, essentially said that, you know, the place needs a fixer-upper, so to speak?
Yes, with the, I guess, the caveat being that, you know, we would want an option period while we secured funding. You know, we would need to...we would be spending a considerable amount of our nonprofits' money, you know, coming up with plans and working with Main Housing to secure funding. So we would not be ready to move forward and buy it outright as-is without a real plan to redevelop it, and I'm not sure that you would want us to be buying it without a full plan to redevelop.
I think that'd be prudent, yes.
The one other thing I would mention is just that the Rural Affordable Housing Program does have a deadline of December 7th. So that is very quick. I think even if you were to move quickly at this point, it would be tight for us, but we...there are other funding sources. There's a supportive housing program coming out from Main Housing, likely in February, that we could also...it would be a slightly different population, but we could also potentially make work.
And just as a follow-up to that, if I may, Mr. Mayor, though, I think Mr. Summer kind of alluded to this, though, that we're on the verge of putting together a new school out on Route 1, though, which will, in theory, open up two properties, including one of them is CK Burn School, which is about a century old, it's got an addition on the back that was built when I was there in the late 80s, though. So it's one of those good bones buildings, though, where, I know we've talked about it privately, Mr. Mayor, though, in terms of how it would be ideal for senior housing or things of that nature. So truth be told, though, you know, this is the opportunity that kind of slips through just because, I mean, we're here in a workshop, though, so, I mean, you know how the speed of local government, though, I mean, it goes slow for a reason. We're spending actual dollars at the actual level. That being said, it's not to be said that there won't be opportunities to build in Saco or get the affordable housing that we've all talked about, and we all know that it's needed. And you have a potential property coming up with Burn School. We haven't really had a serious conversation about what we would do with Fairfield, but there is property out there to be had, though. I just figured I'd throw that out there as a, you know, while we're here, might as well take advantage of the situation.
If I may respond? I definitely, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all your speaking to the importance of affordable housing. I would recommend moving, if I may suggest, moving forward with a, you know, robust RFP process for those...it's for those, the disposition of those properties. There are a lot of developers out there now who are trying to get into the affordable housing world, and I think you would have a very competitive RFP process.
Any further discussion? Any further comments? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I worry that council has created some confusion in both the staff's and public's mind about the disposition of this property, especially with it appearing in the budget as expected revenue, and then withdrawing it, and now this conversation here. I don't think we've provided staff with any clear guidance on how to move forward as a result of this discussion, so I worry about leaving the conversation at this stage. I heard, as much as I love this property, I didn't hear any rebuttal to Director Summer's assertion that $900,000 is too high of a cost for rehab and keeping. I did hear Counselor Johnston say an RFP process might be the best direction forward. I might suggest that we engage in an RFP process, but do it in such a way that the proposals come back to council for weighing against the costs of keeping it and internal use to really...right now, we're making decisions in a vacuum, and if we see what proposals come in, what the uses proposed are, then we can then make an informed decision about the disposition of the property and how best to direct council to move forward. So that would be my suggestion, is we solicit, we do a request for proposal, solicit the proposals, have them come back to council for final disposition.
Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. To my Counselor Berman's point, there wasn't any confusion. We voted to sell it. Everybody agreed, the vote, sell. The question coming back was, what do we want to sell it for? Affordable housing, finding another community space, that type of thing. It wasn't a question about the city not wanting or not wanting, but having the ability to do the renovations. So again, Tracy brought it to economic development to us, we brought it back to council of, what are we looking for, for the property? And I think that's my understanding of what we were doing tonight. And again, meeting Mr. Black, loved the idea, and I think we all kind of agree, affordable housing would be the best second scenario for us to do, and I do agree with putting it through an RFP process. I like the idea. It is, the space-wise is conducive, but there's no parking, so to keep it small and be able to use that second floor, which is a beautiful area, and if renovated, certainly would make a wonderful community area. So I, you know, I appreciate the plan, and it sounds kind of something that I'm looking forward to, having down there if possible. But again, I think this is more geared of, what are we looking for when we sell the property?
Counselor Johnston?
I lost my thought. I got many of them. Yeah, I mean, I don't recall, to be honest, what the vote was, but I will say that I've been part of many councils that have changed their mind on the whim, so I wouldn't hold us to that, per se. I mean, to me, anything's on the table. Part of me is still with you, Mike, as far as, you know, seeing it, you know, a teen center or a multi-generational center. It always has been, but, you know, with respects to Director Summers, I fully understood that we're talking a million dollars. That was much larger, larger conversation than we had previously. So again, as I said, RFP is what I would prefer, and I would really like it to come back to council before it goes out, so we can weigh in on what we're looking for, because, again, to me, anything's on the table. I mean, I'm willing to give it away for a dollar if it's the right project, right? That's me, I'm just saying. I'm also willing to sell it for much more if it's the right project, so I just, a real robust...and to be honest, we haven't got to 32 Market Street, but my feelings are the same with that one, too. Thank you.
City Administrator Bohanko?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to get some more direction. So what council is thinking is an RFP, that would just have a general RFP for reuse of that building, and then have people come in with ideas? Is that what we're looking for?
That seems to be consensus.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Archer?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, when we spoke on this, the original motion was to sell it, but this is, I went to the minutes. The amendment was Counselor Berman moved, Counselor Johnston seconded to close the public area, and we were to retain the building. We were no longer considering selling, but we wanted to hear more options on its usage, which we weren't provided today. For example, where do we stand on staffing in our buildings? Do we need that as an overflow staffing office? These were things that I was hoping were going to come to us, was more than one idea than just sell the building, because that was the initial intent. We tabled it to open our minds. We have one chance to sell it or keep it. That's all we got, and that's why we had this...this is why we're in this meeting today. It wasn't necessarily to sell it, it was to come up with new ideas, fresh new ideas, to see what we could use, how we could use it, or is it best to sell? And all I heard was things we already knew, except for I just added, is this something we need for space? Because the only options we've talked about, and we talked way back when you were a counselor, was building above, like building up over the ancillary building, the annex building. Very expensive. We talked about, we didn't go anywhere with it, it was just a conversation. What other options do we have? And this is really where John can, or City Administrator, can look and see, are we busting at the seams? Because I've heard we would clean this up and put staffing in our, up in there. I wouldn't consider that as professional, being on a stage deck, but could that be renovated with a million dollars to make it staff room while keeping upstairs?
I'm sure the city administrator in his second week hasn't had...
No, I get that, but I was bringing back up the minutes, because that was the true intent of why we stopped the sale to retain it, so we could look at best use. Today's meeting didn't show best use, we just went to selling the property, which was the original intent.
The RFP process might give the time for the city administrator and staff to utilize, and then bring back to you an executive session and say, hey, you know what, we did receive all these RFPs, but on second thought, we want to do this. So again, putting out that RFP might satisfy everything that we're kind of looking at.
Or we can ask for intent letters, where you don't even go through the full RFP process, you just say, hey, this is a building, what is the public? And I'm not talking public as in citizens, I'm talking developers, nonprofits that are out there, which would be you as well, or other, the city coming to us.
And again, that's for you guys to decide, but you're talking to a developer who's here, who says, I want to do both your affordable housing, and I also want to be good stewards and help have something in the community.
But we have a deadline, I don't think we can honor it.
They're a deadline, and...
We couldn't honor it.
We're not gonna.
Time-wise. It's just not...
Counselor...
The RFP and then three meetings wouldn't happen.
Yeah, I appreciate Counselor Archer moving us back to the minutes and recalling that the move to sell failed two to five, and the motion to retain passed six to one. However, we've put staff in a pretty difficult position in that their overall recommendation hasn't changed, right? The cost to renovate the building hasn't changed relative to potential uses, and that's why I think letters of intent are fine, or an RFP are fine, but to bring some other ideas from the community back to us to understand what some of those uses are, what some, you know, potential transformations of the building could be, how the building could serve the public and/or the city. And as part of understanding what those RFPs look like, understanding what's proposed, we may, and staff may, gain some additional inspiration about how the city could use it, but if not, we'll have RFPs in hand, and we'll be able to dispose of the building in that way. I think if we send the staff away and have a workshop four months from now, again, we'll just find the same recommendations, that it's still a million dollars to renovate, and we're still not sure that that's worth the benefits. So I think we need a path out of that way, and I think collecting some RFPs from the community is one way to do that.
Mayor, may I speak?
Absolutely.
When we go through the Chapter 81 process, it was, again, going to Counselor Johnston's question, what about staff? Can we utilize this? And I did go to staff. Can we utilize this building? And staff had felt that just wouldn't work, and the biggest thing with that was going to be the parking. So if you put staff over there, then if it's customer base, we have, what we can do for employees to be able to find a space here to park. So that was a concern of theirs. The other question the council needs to ask themselves, do you, what type of investment you want to make into the building? If you want to keep the building, the more that we hang on to it and do nothing, the higher the cost is going to be to renovate it and keep it going. The building's a beautiful building, I'm all for architecture and what we can do with it, but those are the types of questions that really need to be answered. Staff is going to do what council wants us to do, but I guess the hard question is going to be, you are given a cost estimation, and we all know that probably those cost figures have gone up even more. Are you willing to put in over a million dollars for this building?
I did want to just add a little bit, since we're talking about costs to retain. The question came up about grants, and I cannot sit here and say definitively that there are no grant money out there possibly to support this project, but I do spend a lot of time reviewing grant proposals and things being issued by the federal government, and the grant environment right now is focused on environmental sustainability, reduction of greenhouse gases, conservation of land. These are the kinds of grants that I'm seeing that the city is qualified for. Because we don't have a high-need census tract within our borders, we do not qualify for CDBG block grant funding, which would be probably your best grant source for this kind of project. And I have not seen historic preservation grants for municipalities in the amount that would significantly offset costs.
What was that acronym you just said, Glenn?
CDBG, Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you.
And Tracy can speak to that in more detail. The second piece would be if we did want to move forward with renovating this building, my recommendation as a financial officer of the city would be to go to bond, to the voters, because once you're talking about a million dollars, that's significant use of our funds, and it would be prudent to distribute that cost over a longer period. Interest rates have gone up on municipal bond issuances, we are looking at a significant issuance for the school, we have the treatment facility. These are significant costs that are putting pressure on our budget. And lastly, as a community center, it would not be TIF qualified.
Correct. It seems like there's still some consensus to do our RFPs with the idea that the city administrator will do another analysis regarding space and kind of bring all those to council in an executive session, and we can move from there. Any objection to that course of action?
For the RFP, what exactly do you want the outcome to be from the RFP? Is this, we're just, first suggestions, ideas from developers, what they would do with the property? Because I'm not putting, you know, it out for sale or anything, this is just to get suggestions and ideas, is that accurate?
I think that's what the council's consensus is, to find out what's available and then what can be worked on as far as price, dependent upon the ideas that come forward from there.
Counselor Hatch? If, I'm trying to put myself in the role of a developer here, I think it would be helpful for me to know that the property is potentially for sale, instead of just coming up with ideas.
Right. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, sure is, and I wouldn't spend the time doing that personally as a developer, so I think we need a little specificity here in this RFP, and if it, if it's simply, if you were to buy the property...
What would you do with it?
What would you do with it? And then we can always reserve the right to negotiate whatever component parts of that, whether it's a selling price for a dollar or a selling price for $200,000, evaluate all the cost-benefit analysis of that. Does that help you?
No. And the reason why, the reason why I say that is because it's kind of like a dream, if I had a million dollars, what would I do? I think you need a little bit more firmness as far as that.
So perhaps... Perhaps, perhaps your drafting of your thoughts on how our RFP should, I don't want to spin our wheels anymore in this. And that's my, my point.
Wait to hear.
Doesn't the RFP by itself say that you're willing to entertain a sale, a possible sale depending upon what you bring forward? So why would we have to say it if it's already, you know, kind of intertwined in the sense that you're putting out a request for proposal for a potential sale? Just a thought, but Counselor McPhail, then Counselor Johnson, then Counselor Berman. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you. My goal right now is to sell the property for affordable housing. Back to Director Summers' point, I'm willing to wait the five years knowing that we have multiple school properties coming available. It will take us five years to renovate. It will take anybody five years to renovate that building, whether it's sold for a community center or we did it. So I'm not included in that consensus of kind of weighing around anymore what options are out there. I would like to see it sold for affordable housing.
Counselor Johnson.
Understood. Back to my original point with the RFP, I think we're like spinning our wheels on this as I indicated. I simply want, I'm not asking for staff to write anything. Just give me a cookie cutter RFP. We, as council, can sit here in a workshop and brainstorm exactly what we're seeking, right? Like that's, I think this is getting a little bit over the top. Like really, I'm saying, this is a publicly owned piece of property. What are your ideas with a direction towards affordable housing? A homeless center, something else we haven't spoken about. It's a dirty word around here apparently, but I think that both Saco and Biddeford needs to be looking at that because I'm seeing on a daily basis now it right before my eyes. In fact, on the way over here, I had a conversation, someone asking me for money who was homeless. So it's, it's not in the background, it's in the foreground in my reality. So again, we can craft it. Not asking for staff to do that. Just give me the RFP sample of one, whatever the proper language is, and we can figure out what we're seeking. I'm not looking for it to be super open ended. I mean, I think overall, we kind of have certain areas that we're kind of honing in on, whether it's community needs or affordable housing or, like I said, housing in general. Thank you.
Counselor Berman.
I think I generally agree with Counselor Johnson, with the exception of if I understand what he's proposing, he'd want an RFP to come back to council for a workshop. I think I'm prepared just to put out an RFP. And I think it can be fairly broad based and not seeking ideas, but seeking proposals of people who want to buy the property and what they'll do with it and then just have those RFPs once they're submitted.
They'll come back to you.
Come back to council. The property is for sale unless we don't get a good use.
You have the option to not accept.
Yeah. So I'm somewhere between Counselor McPhail and Counselor Johnson. Let's put the RFP out. Let's get the proposals back. Let's evaluate them and weigh that to make sure there's a good use in there.
Counselor Archer.
I would, I would argue if we go that route, we need to, we have Temple Street that we sold for like five grand, one grand, two grand, and nothing's happened for it. So we're going to need conditions in here. So sitting there. Like we didn't have any conditions and Temple Street still looks the way it looks.
Worse.
We have no updates, it's worse. Yes, I would agree with that. It's worse. But that's where I'm okay with RFPs, but we've also been burnt by giving land away.
Well, again, in working through that, you always want to be able to, if you're selling a city owned property, you should always have stipulations in there and some restrictions.
No, I agree with that. It just, it didn't happen. Can't go in details, but it didn't. And we're sitting on, it was supposed to be originally what, for five veterans, families, low income veterans, and we're still sitting at a property that is to be torn down now? Condemned? It was almost near condemned or condamnable a while ago.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to that?
Please.
I would be happy to bring forward with the city administrator an update, as long as the city administrator is all set with that and another council meeting, but I think that's a little, little bit outside of what we're talking about today, although it was a good initiative, as an affordable housing initiative.
It's part of it because I'm talking about the protections that we need for this new one. I brought it in historically only.
The final deed on Temple Street did actually have conditions. They didn't have timing conditions, so you could probably institute something like that at a future sale, but they did have several conditions on it.
Okay. So it still seems like there's some consensus to put out RFPs and to have them come back to council and council can then consider them or at that point say, no, we don't like any of these and then draft their own as they see fit. Any objection to that course of action?
So Mayor, the process would be to bring back those RFPs and meet in executive session. Okay?
Yes.
Got it?
Do you have a timeline?
Well, I think one of the things that we, we'll, we'll talk about that internally to see if we can make it expedited or what else is on, what's happening. So we can take a look at that.
Counselor Johnson, you had your hand up. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, again, whatever path we choose with this RFP, all I'm really looking for is for the language to come back to council before it goes out. That's all. So we can weigh in with whatever we would like, so we don't have things that have happened in the past.
So the draft before it goes out, please send to the city council for review so that we can talk about it at an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes care of 12 School Street. Let's move on to 32 Market Street, item B. Tracy, any update you want to put for the council that hasn't been put into the packet?
I think Emily did a great job pulling everything together. We had a discussion with actually all three of us, so I'm going to pass this one off to Emily.
So on this one, took a look at the files that we have. Looks like in 2021 and in 2022, this came back to council and then just recently in 2023, we had some discussions about it, looking at properties that the city has on its books still. So as a recap, this is about a 2.75 acre parcel. It butts Diamond Riverside Park, so we've, I'm glad the Parks and Rec director could join us today. In the past, there were previous plans in 2015 for 10 units of affordable elderly housing, about 1.32 acres of residential use for that development. There was a purchase and sale with the city at the time, which had since expired. Then the project, going back a little bit farther back, was remediated in 2012. There was some discussion as to whether open space bond funds were used to help to pay for that remediation. Glennis and I did a lot of research and we reported back in July 24th of this year that there were no open space bond funds used. We also asked for any council or updates or records if there was anything contrary to the information that we provided. We didn't find anything else since then. So just more closing the loop on this property, see if there's something that the council would like us to do about the property or take it whatever direction we want to take it in. No, no pressure really from staff, just more of trying to close the loop and get some discussion going on. Anything you'd want to see, any questions that remain?
Counselor Archer.
Have we ever entertained expanding the park itself, keeping the land and just expanding it? Maybe greater parking and just beautifying that area around the, I know you probably have. I don't think we've ever discussed it. I don't think we've ever discussed it, but.
So, so yes, it's definitely been discussed with the advisory committee as well as the Eastern Trail. So this park, you have the eastern, the potential right now, we've done a feasibility for the people who don't know on this board, I'm the president of the Eastern Trail Management Division as well. So with that is, is Miss Patow is running the Eastern Trail. So the idea is to create a, a trail from Thorn Academy over the Saco River up to the hospital, pretty much off the road. So I've looked at this parcel for a long time in the sense of this would be a great trail's head for the Eastern Trail. It'd be a great place for, for parking to allow an open space to create on, if permission, on unitel easement, a, a boardwalk going down to the Eastern Trail, not the Eastern Trail, excuse me, Diamond Riverside along the railroad tracks. So the potential and the vision's there. For the most part, from my end, it wouldn't be that hard to create the open space, put some picnic tables up there. We could even, I've even looked at it possibly as a dog park potentially, but in that part of the neighborhood, there's a lot of backyards and a lot of private property. But definitely an opportunity to be able to create a, a nice sitting park over in the Maple Street, Lincoln Street area, and then create the trail head going down to Diamond Riverside and eventually to the backside of Diamond Riverside on the other side of the railroad trussel, where there's about 55 acres back there and create a more of a robust trail system on the backside of that, of that parcel of land that will actually take, potentially take you up to, to Lincoln Street on the backside up closer to the Riverside, where potentially, without saying here, the Lincoln Street potential subdivision coming in. So there's, there's a huge abundance of opportunity there. So in 2021, I was part of that conversation about the low income housing and really the conversation that I struggled with, with the, with what was being said was the easement where they wanted to give the Parks and Recreation. I wasn't opposed to the design and the plan, but where they were trying to give the pedestrian easement, it didn't make any sense for that parcel of land to get down to Diamond Riverside or if the Eastern Trail came through there. You know, they were just handcuffing it to stone, well, this little piece, it didn't make sense. I wasn't opposed, wasn't in favor of that then. I think it'd be a nice little pocket park. I really do. I think it'd be a nice little open space.
So I see this as a pretty easy compromise trade, is that we bought School Street for recreational and civic access.
Yes.
And Market Street has always been for affordable housing. We're now talking about affordable housing at School Street. Why don't we make it there? And all we're doing is a swap. That encourages me more to now make even eight units, nine units. It opens up, it opens it up because not, we intended 200,000, 240,000, I think is what we bought it for.
Correct.
We're selling it for a different amount. What's already public is 200 grand. We know that, it's in our records. Figure out a good deal, figure out whatever the deal means, not necessarily money. Figure out a good deal for School Street, take some of that cash, put it over there. The intent was teen center. It was, the intent of that purchase was community. We can now do it at Market Street using the funds, whatever is raised, whatever we consider, and just shift it over and just do a swap. It's the intent swap is what it is.
If I may ask, may, the one thing nice about that, especially if you increase the trail, trails are TIF funded, potentially TIF funded.
Add that as well.
So it has more capabilities of making that a more of a realistic idea.
So I think we have a simple, I'm more on board of now selling if the intent is that becomes larger park, accessible park. Because I know there is parking down there. You have to go down that side street. I have not been there since it was redone.
You have to go.
But I guarantee you, if I drive by a parking lot and I see the park more, it will make me, it will just remind me to, I need to bring my kids. Because right now I'm reminded I need to bring my kids, but now it's starting to get freezing, so not going until spring.
Counselor Berman.
Yeah, one of the really important elements of this property for me is that Eastern Trail access. And I don't know where we are in discussions with the connector. I know about a year ago, I was attending some Eastern Trail planning meetings where this parcel was critical to their eventual expansion plans and crossing the river. While I imagine that still remains a long term vision and not an immediate term vision, I would really like to see whatever the final use of this land is be amenable to creating that final gap in the Eastern Trail and crossing the river, where I think the railroad bridge now is, is really the key piece.
Correct.
To that element. So I love affordable housing. I love it everywhere. I also, again, transportation is key and bike and pad transportation is key. And I think this is the hope for the Eastern Trail, to create an off-road complete trail. So I'd like to make sure that we prioritize that use and the disposition of this property.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, going back to the original acquisition of the property, the intent was for it to be part of Diamond Park. It was a subsequent council that then had this proposal from Biddeford Housing to do this, the senior element. And that's where it got divided off into this land, that 32 being affordable housing and then the low lying wetland that really has no use to Parks and Rec, being merged into Diamond Park. So from my perspective, I've personally kind of viewed this land best utilized as recreational land, particularly given the fact that this trailhead or connector has been spoken about for a decade, maybe two. And I just recently heard there's been some movement on that. I don't, I don't remember where. I was thinking about that today. But I did hear somebody involved with either Saco Bay Trails or the Eastern Trail talk about that starting to move forward again. So that's something that I definitely think is, like Counselor Berman said, it's imperative, whatever goes there, we get that connector and the appropriate connector, not what was proposed where they looped you out into no man's land. So and then I think, given the fact that we now have a pretty significant development further down the street, or at least proposed one, that may come to fruition, it kind of, at least from my perspective, would make sense that we keep this land, you know, untouched and perhaps make it more accessible for people that might live in that subdivision further down the road. But again, I'm kind of open to whatever's out there also, as long as it's an open process if we are looking to sell this portion.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you. This is more of a generic question for anyone involved with Saco Bay Trails or the desire to get the connector of the Eastern Trail through Saco and Biddeford. Are, is the organization and anyone involved pretty much just at this point holding their breath and hoping that we retain this property because there is no reasonable alternative to somehow get this trail magically across the river if, if it doesn't go right through the middle of Saco? I mean, how do they, how is the feelings of the organization at this point?
So we've done the, the Eastern Trail did a feasibility study from Thorn Academy over to, to Southern Main Healthcare. So the feasibility study is done. We're looking into a design. Obviously, the railroad is really the caveat more than anything else. You know, and on the Eastern Trail Management Division, that piece of parcel has had conversations of it'd be a nice parking lot, nice open trailhead. Again, you lost parking at Thorn Academy, especially when it's in session. You have some parking over at Hannaford. You have a very small parking lot over at Millbrook. So you've lost multi, at least you lost your major parking spots for the Eastern Trail. I'd be aiming to create a parking spot over on 32 Market that would put you into a trail's head that will either take you from Market up to Scarborough, once we close the gap and over to Rainwright Fields or down hopefully to Kittery. It's a nice middle section to be able to put some parking there. Are they holding their breath? No. But at the end of the day, it's the conversation that before we get too far, at least I go back to the Eastern Trail Management and you might get a letter from us saying, we hope that the city of Saco would be inclined not to sell this parcel until we get farther along with the Eastern Trail. I think as a city of Saco, it's an essential piece of property for the, for the Diamond Riverside as well. You know, to, to expand the Diamond Riverside in that park.
Follow up. So you're telling me there is no Plan B, no matter how far out of the park it is, to somehow get the trail completed without that particular piece of property at this time?
So right now, the, the Plan B is on the road. So from Thorn Academy to, to.
So just as the same, pretty much what it is right now? That's, that's your only Plan B?
That's Plan B, pretty much.
Okay. So just so we're all aware, that's the only reasonable Plan B at this point is keep it on the road like it is.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Berman.
Yeah, just for the public's benefit, if you go to the easterntrail.org and click on their over the river campaign, you'll see they're currently fundraising to connect the trail and the bridge. They won a local grant in 2020 to do a feasibility study. They're now past that phase and, and raising active money to complete this project. But again, this, the right of way over this property and the railway bridge is the plan.
Yeah, they're going to camera leave it off the current railroad right now, so it's going to go to the side of it is the hopes.
Counselor Archer.
Now, again, this is a very rough estimate because we just started talking about it. If we, or maybe you've already done research, knowing you, because you do that. What would it cost to expand this park to, to the city? An estimate is fine.
So for us, obviously.
Given the land is free, we know that.
Yeah, the moan would be free. It'd be putting in a parking lot right now. It'd be putting in a parking lot right now, pretty much where the, if you drive down Market Street, it's where the rocks are now, so we just expand that. I'd reach out to Unitel to get permission for the easement to create a boardwalk trail system over their pipeline. Eastern Trail, all Eastern Trails, pretty much, they go over the pipeline as well, so it's not something they're uncommon to do. To create a boardwalk similar to what the Heath has or what we've done up at Horton Woods, 20 grand. So if you put the parking lot in there and the trail, I'm going to say 50, $60,000, some trees, benches, tops, 60, 65.
And it's, you have pretty much all the equipment. We'd be internal with most of the equipment.
Correct. We do the, we build the boardwalk ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah, the moan would be us, so we probably team up with Public Works or I think Go and Sand and Gravel, who have a contract for the parking lot.
I know it's the city administrator's budget, but that is, sounds like enough that could fit into a budget for the next year.
It would actually, I'll be honest with you, it would probably go in my, so we have a $50,000 annual neighborhood park budget that we put into the capital, so that might get shuffled into that with some, using some open space lines. Potentially, I can make it work pretty quickly.
But really no impact?
Correct.
And then with TIF as well?
I'd come to her for TIF money, don't worry. I would.
Everybody comes to me.
Yeah, you got, I know you got, I see the brains rolling. Yeah, you're all on the same page. I mean, it would have little fiscal impact to us and we'd have a larger park, a more accessible park and connect that stage.
Yep.
I mean, that seems like a win-win. I'm like even more interested in selling school now and having those funds available to Pavilion or whatever else that could go.
Yep.
Because we bought it for that purpose. We bought it for the community, that school. So if we use the funds for the community, seems like we're still in alignment with when we first voted on it.
So it seems like there's no consensus to sell this property and we want to hold on to this property. That's the consensus I'm getting. Any objection? And that's what we're going to do.
Good.
We're going to move on. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
One last question, just popped in my head. Would this be a suitable location for another community garden?
Yes, it'd be a raised garden type of thing because I don't know how deep I can dig in the ground, but we could do raised beds.
Just thinking, that one fills up lightning quick and this would give that side of town the opportunity.
Yeah, they would definitely have to be raised beds.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be able to dig in the ground.
Yeah. But that's something you can definitely do and you can start like with 10 and expand it over time, you know, so you can definitely, it'd be a nice location for that. Yeah.
So with that, that completes the discussion on 32 Market Street unless there's any last minute. If not, we will adjourn the workshop at 9:33. Have a great evening, everyone. You too. Marshall, did you sign this?